Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to call it to order this Pierce County Council meeting in Committee of the Whole. It is Wednesday, October 4th, 2023. The time is 9:34 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Excused.
Councilmember Kruber.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Excused.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
You have five members present.
We have five members present and a quorum. We're at Item 3, Approval of the Agenda. We are in Committee of the Whole for our second budget-related committee of the whole. Last week, we heard from the Director of Finance about an overview of the Executive's Proposed Budget, and today is the first department to come before the council. That's our Human Services Department. We'll get to that introduction in a little bit, but we're going to dive into the Human Services Proposed 2024-2025 Budget, and then there'll be time for Councilmember Discussion, Questions, and Comments, hopefully focused on the Human Services Budget after that. Is there any objection to approving our agenda as presented? Not seeing any. The agenda is approved. So we are here. I'll soon turn it over to Mr. Bokey. I just wanted to indicate, thank you, Director Moss, for going first, being brave to go first. It demonstrates how important Human Services are to this county and to this council. And I assure you, Director Moss, the number of questions you're going to get is nothing but because of how important your department's work is for the health and welfare of this community. So many of us are very invested in your department's success, and so that's where the number of questions are going to come from, I'm certain, but we're eager to hear from you, Director Moss. Mr. Bokey, to help me introduce this.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Mello, Paul Bokey, council staff. Just a few housekeeping items. The Human Services tab is in the middle of your budget book. It's actually Section 10, begins on Page 1. There is a list of the funds involved. I count 16 different funds, covering a lot of subject matter that you'll go over today. I'd also call your attention that towards the front of the book, there are when some of these funds get discussed today, and if we go into that, Section 4, Page 4, is the funded, projected fund balances, existing fund balances and projected fund balances. You'll also hear a lot about transfers between funds, and those begin in Section 4, Page 13, in the first section of the budget book. And staffing levels, and you're going to hear quite a bit about staffing levels and staffing changes, and the staffing changes begin on Section 4, Page 28. We also have, you should have, or momentarily you will have, your packets, the decision packets that we'll mainly be speaking about today will be in the Executive Proposed 2024-2025 Biennial Budget Other Funds Decision Package, and that will begin on Page 2, and it goes for about five pages into different funds. So we're going to have to, when we start to talk about the decision packets, we'll actually have to talk about not just the fund name, but the fund number, because there's a lot of different funds here.
Thank you for further orienting us, Mr. Bokey. The decision packages were emailed to council over a week ago. We've had them begin going through, and hence our questions that are prepared for Director Moss, but I'm sure she explains it. Many of our questions will get answered as we go along. So they are being actively printed before us, in case you haven't had the chance to print them, but we've had them digitally for about a week now. Director Moss, welcome. We'll invite you up to the podium, and we'll play this by ear a little bit, Director Moss, but I'm thinking we might get through, my initial thinking is, we might get through Slide 12 and take a brief recess, and then come back and finish the discussion together after Slide 12, which seems like a natural break, but we'll play that a little bit by ear, and let's try to let Director Moss get through some natural sections in her presentation, and then we'll pause naturally after certain sections for questions and dialogue, and then allow the director to get through sections, so she can keep with her thinking and her rhythm. Director Moss, good morning and welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you, Chair Mello, and good morning to all of you council members here and online. My name is Heather Moss. I'm the Director of Human Services for Pierce County. I'm really excited to be here today to present to you our second biennial budget since I've been here. With me virtually is Jackie Carney, who is our Chief Financial Officer. We decided that it would be better if she was somewhere remote, so she could have multiple screens in front of her, and I can pitch all of the hard questions to her. So Jackie is standing by. Just to orient you, yeah.
Thank you.
Just to orient you a little bit, this is the largest budget for Pierce County Human Services, at least in the four years since I've been here. It really demonstrates a need and demand for services in our area of service provision has grown and continues to grow in our community. It's the most ambitious budget that I'm going to be presenting to you so far, but at the same time, it's affordable and it's sustainable, given our fund sources. You might remember, first, I just want to point out that I'm really grateful for Executive Dan Meyer's support of this budget. He recognizes the important work that we do and really made this a cornerstone of the full budget county budget package that he presented to you a few weeks ago. You might remember, so I'm going first, so I get to play this however I want, but you might remember that our budget is very different from a lot of other departments that you're going to hear from later in this process. We have a very small general fund allocation that comes to Pierce County Human Services. For this budget, our calculations show that it's less than half a percent. So general fund dollars don't really factor into the conversation about the funds and the allocations and the decision package that I'm going to be presenting to you today. And as Paul mentioned, we do have 16 different funds that we draw from. Many of those funds have multiple fund sources, so those fund sources can be local taxes or fees, or they can be state or federal grants. So we have many more than 16 of those, but those all funnel down into those 16 funds that Paul talked about. Just finally, this budget represents an investment in the employees who serve our county's most vulnerable populations, and some of these are delayed investments because we were not making some of those permanent investments during COVID, not knowing what the future held, literally. So you'll see some right sizing, is how I would characterize a lot of the work that we're presenting here. Next slide, please. Per the format that you've asked for in these budget presentations, we want to start off by focusing on the council's 2024-2025 budget priorities that you established in your budget ordinance a couple of months ago. I know that these budgets priorities are very specific, and there are subbullets within each of them, so we were pretty conservative when we were identifying the budget categories or the prioritization categories. You'll see it further when I talk about decision packages. Primarily, our work focuses on those top three, housing affordability, homelessness, and stable housing, and behavioral health systems. A little bit of focus on youth and young adults there in the corner. We have many, I would say about 40% of the DPs that I'm going to be sharing with you today, that fall outside of these areas. I believe that they are still important investments for the county to make. They represent investments in our infrastructure and administrative capacity of the Human Services Department. It's a theme you'll hear me talk about a lot in the coming minutes here. And then they also represent just program growth, that there are caseloads that are growing, there's demand that's growing, and needs that are changing. So those are also things you'll see outside, potentially outside of the council's priorities there. Next slide, please. This slide shows a pretty high-level overview of the organizational chart for our department. You can see that we have seven divisions within our department. There's one partner that's missing here, and that's WSU. Washington State University Co-op Extension Office has a sort of dotted-line relationship to Pierce County Human Services. They're not included in this budget. It's sort of a keep on going on with their regular body of work, so that's why they're not in this picture. Couple of other important positions that aren't listed here are Communications Manager and my Administrative Assistant, Becky, who, without her, we could not do so much of the work that we do. You have a couple of dropdowns here, three dropdowns, that show some more detail on the body of work that happens within those divisions. The other four are fairly straightforward. I will point out here that one of the decision packages that I'm going to be talking to you about later this morning is a proposal to add another division, so an eighth division to Pierce County Human Services, pulling our developmental disabilities work out of the ADR division. So more to come on that. We do have decision packages pertaining to each of these seven divisions, and we reference those in our slides later in the deck. Next slide. So again, in keeping with the theme of the slide deck template that your staff shared with us, this is just a brief description of our seven divisions and what happens within each of those seven divisions. Hopefully, you know most of this by now. I've talked to you a lot about our divisions, but briefly, Aging and Disability Services, this is for planning and coordinating services to our senior population. Councilmember Hitchens, you were asking in an earlier question about direct service versus indirect service. ADR is our largest division because it has so much work happening in direct services. So we have a Medicaid Case Management Program as our largest program within ADR, and they serve clients, they basically coordinate services for senior and disabled populations who are living in their homes. So they help arrange what type of services that they need coming into their home on a daily basis, and then our case managers are overseeing a client caseload of about 75 clients, and contacting them on a monthly basis, and generally coordinating with their day-to-day caseworkers. Behavioral Health, you know a little bit about that. That's a newly created division in response to the newly passed Behavioral Health tax that was, that you all approved last year. And that's primarily focused on Substance Abuse Disorder Services and Mental Health Services, closely aligned with some of the work that we do with our justice system. Community Action Programs, CAP programs exist in our communities across the country, created under Lyndon Johnson in the 1960s. Our CAP program focuses on providing services to our most vulnerable populations. This includes our preschool program, ECAP, as well as incentives or supports for low-income families to remain in their homes, rather than becoming unhoused or having housing, suffering from housing insecurity. So that includes weatherization, minor home repair, and energy assistance. Community Services is one of our larger indirect divisions. Community Services is run by John Barbie. This is the one that houses our Affordable Housing, Homeless Services, and Community Development work. Administration, that's me and my team, Annika, who you all have interacted with often. Jackie sits in that group as well, providing back office supports to all of the other divisions. SHAPE is also somewhat new to our department. SHAPE is the South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership, run by Jason Gautier. SHAPE provides support to local jurisdictions, I believe it's 15 now, local jurisdictions who have signed on to the interlocal agreement with Pierce County to collaborate on affordable housing initiatives. You've heard from Jason recently. And then finally, our Veterans Program, run by Robert Sheets, and our Veterans Program provides direct client services as well, also supports veterans in the Veteran Court, therapeutic court, and runs our Veterans Resource Center. Next slide. Okay, so this is where we start getting into some numbers. What I want to point out here is that some of the numbers that I'm presenting to you, I shouldn't say that, all of the numbers I'm presenting to you today are budget numbers. So when we look at FTE numbers or historical budget numbers, those are recorded budget numbers. As you all know, we have funding and FTE changes that happen within our division throughout a biennium or throughout a fiscal year. So what we end up with at the end of a fiscal year is not necessarily what the budget said at the beginning of the year. But to sort of keep us all on track and have reference points, we're using budgeted numbers. So this 26.17 FTEs is the budgeted number of FTEs for our department for this current biennium, so for 2022, 2023. What you can see in these budgeted numbers is our largest divisions. Again, Aging and Disability Resources is the largest one because of the size of the direct services program. In addition to Medicaid Case Management, we also have our Health Homes Program that operates out of ADR. Our next largest is Community Action, again, because there's a large component of direct services there. The biggest ones are ECAP Program, which is our preschool program in seven sites around the county. You'll hear more about that later. And then also our Energy Assistance Program. Our Energy Assistance Program, I think I'll talk about it in one of our DPs later, but I just want to point out to you that last year, we served over 3,200 households, providing them energy assistance, last year meaning 2022. And Medicaid Case Management, just for references, back in ADR, serves approximately 6,000 clients. So those are vulnerable seniors or disabled individuals living in their own homes, preventing them from having to go into an institutional setting. I'm going to pause here for questions, if you have any questions about FTEs, just as they're reflected here.
Thank you for pausing, Director Moss. Questions about anything we've heard in the grounding information? We're going to get into more detail about the decision packages, but anything, questions about anything we've heard so far? The microphones are a little turned around. I know Vice Chair Campbell's not here, so who has Vice Chair Campbell's microphone?
Looks like, yeah. Okay, quick on the FTEs, the point, what does that mean, the points, like Veterans is 4.4? What does that mean?
So some of that, I'll get into that when I talk more specifically about the FTE decision packages, but some of that is just how we allocate FTEs, particularly in the back office function, so mostly in our fiscal team. So how we allocate our grant accounting assistants or our grant accountants to the different funds or the different programs that they serve. So that's why you see some funky point FTEs. We don't have anybody who's working a .01 FTE.
A quarter of someone's time might be doing accounting for that program.
Correct.
Spending the other three fourths of their time on doing homelessness work. Good question. Councilor Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to make sure I understood your comments about FTEs. So I know in 2023, we've made some changes to increase a couple of FTEs around some of the work, so when we see the changes in FTE, it'll be what was originally presented in our budget book, the last biennium, as compared to where we are?
I believe so.
Heather, can I chime in here?
There's Jackie.
Bone a friend, we love it.
Bone a friend, I'm here. Good morning, everyone. There are some changes that we made mid-cycle, and those changes were recorded as part of our base budget if they were permanent career positions. If they were limited duration positions, they were removed.
Okay, thank you.
Is that helpful?
That is very helpful, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilor Herrera.
One more question on FTEs. With all these numbers here, are any of them overlapped, let's say, like for housing or something like that? A veteran needs housing. Do they, is, are they all siloed, so they'll just handle themselves within their for housing for veterans, or do they go to the Aging and Disability Resource and tap into...
Yeah, that's a good question. So program staff do live within their division, right? So they don't span across divisions. Fiscal staff do work across divisions. That said, the example that you're suggesting absolutely happens, that we have staff meeting on a regular basis to case manage a particular client who might need more than just energy assistance, they might also need some services in our Affordable Housing System. So, and our veterans, absolutely, we're talking to, they're talking to our Community Action Program staff on a regular basis.
Thank you. Director Moss, we see the Deputy Director position in your organizational chart. We know you're actively hiring. It's great to see. I do not know how you run this division without a Deputy Director. So that, we see that Deputy Director position continuing to be requested and funded in your budget. Do you, you on pace to hire that position before the end of the year?
We are in the final stages of conducting the hiring recruitment process right now.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hopefully, that'll be a big assistance to the very complicated work your team does and all that you're juggling on our behalf. One more time, the FTEs that are on here, you were trying to make sure we're referencing the right numbers, that's the adopted current biennium budget FTEs, or were the FTEs were landing in reality at the end of this biennium?
Adopted, so initially adopted budget.
Thank you.
Yes, I believe that's correct. Yes. So there will be, so the base budget for our department will look slightly different from this, and then you'll have the new decision package FTEs on top of that as well.
Yes, so these FTEs on this slide is not what's in the Executive's Proposed Budget for Human Services. It is not. This reflects current reality, current authorized FTEs. Thank you for making sure we're following. I think we're ready to proceed.
Okay, next slide, please. I took the liberty of adding an extra slide into your template because I wanted to set a little bit of context for you and frame, again, reframe the conversation we're having about budget versus actual dollars. So what you see here is a budget history for our department going back to 2018. Just a reminder for those listening who might not be aware, we moved to a biennial budget in 2020, so that's why the numbers start looking very different. But if you think about them as two years, then you can see why the increases from the previous year are calculated on single fiscal years. So just that note. What I think is important to note here is that our budget is growing, first point to make. Second point is that the 2020-2021 budget of $185 million happened right at the beginning or right before the COVID pandemic. So what you don't see reflected in that number is the massive influx of CARES and ARPA dollars that came to our community and specifically to our department during that biennium. So that 185, it was pre-pandemic reflection. Just for your awareness, at the end of the biennium for 2020-2021, we were closer to $343.7 million. So just a recognition of the scale of increase that happened over those two years during the pandemic in terms of influx of dollars and program responsibility for Human Services. We did know, going into 2022, a little bit more about the landscape around ARPA funding. So that's why there's a big jump into the 2022 biennium, and you see the $351.8 million there. Again, a good chunk of that is ARPA dollars, so while you see a significant jump from the previous biennium, a lot of that is just the timeliness and the messiness and the large impact of COVID-related funding. Just for awareness, again, at the end of this biennium, we anticipate our budget will land somewhere around $378.9 million. So again, there's a little bit of a bump from the original allocation of $351 million. So just so you can see again how our budget moves a little bit within that two-year period. So getting to the main point that I wanted to make about this particular slide is the budget that's presenting, we are presenting to you today is just over $410 million for the biennium for Pierce County Human Services. This is a $60 million increase approximately from last, or the current biennial budget. Most of that is ARPA. With the decision packages that I'm going to share with you today come in at just under $9 million, the remainder of that is ARPA funding. One last point I wanted to make on this slide before I move on, and Gary might disagree with me here, but budget is an art, not a science, so I think while we are all working very hard to match the numbers, sometimes it depends a lot on what timeframe you're looking at or what perspective you're taking on that. So I just want to keep that in mind.
Liberal arts majors and accountants, differences.
Okay, next slide, please. I really appreciate that you asked us to list out our critical needs and challenges. This became a theme for how I presented our budget proposal to Executive Dan Meyer as well, so I'm happy to share it with you. These are themes that really came out after we pulled together all of the decision packages, and what they show to me is an agency that is coming out of a pandemic, coming out of a pretty intense time where we were largely in responsive mode and triage, and really being able to think more strategically and long-term and right-size our agency. I'm going to go through each of these, if that's helpful to you, because I think there's some detail in here that's important for you to understand from our perspective of how we put together our budget. The first one is about right-sizing our agency program and fiscal capacity. Again, beyond coming out of the pandemic, we're really at a critical point in growth in our programs. The AAA, so our Area Aging and Disability Resources Team, is experiencing some growth, and we are recognizing that in a lot of the decision packages you'll see today. Our DD program is growing in size and complexity. Community Services Division, as you know, where we have our Affordable Housing and Homelessness, has a bright, big spotlight on it these days. Our fiscal team, we have a lot of additional responsibilities around contract development, contract oversight, contract monitoring. There's a lot more scrutiny coming from state and our funding auditors, so we're responding to those external demands. And we just see, we anticipate that those demands on our services and our staff are going to continue into the future. The second challenge that we are trying to meet here is meeting significant senior population growth. Right now, about 21% of our county's population is over 60. Just want to pause for a minute as I get closer to that. That's kind of offensive, that 60 is considered a senior population, but there you have it. It's a nuance that the feds make us count. But what we also know is that it's growing. By 2030, about 25% of our population will be over the age of 60, which means that they qualify for a lot of, income qualify for a lot of the developmental Aging and Disability Resource Services that we have. What I think is even more interesting about our senior population, though, is that we have a particularly diverse senior population. So we have over 17% of our current population over the age of 60, so that 21%, 17% of them report as being non-white, so they are other than, they have some other designation racially or ethnically than white, which means adding some complexity, not only in the staffing that we provide to represent that population, but also in how we provide services and the languages that we provide those services in. So more to come on that. Number three here, we see a theme running throughout these budget packages about supporting internal and external partners and partnerships. We are happy to talk more about some of the transfers, Paul referenced, transfers going between departments or between funds. We have some funding going to the Medical Examiner's Office, to our courts, our partners in the Superior and District Courts, and to the Finance Department. We also, under this theme, talk a little bit about the support that we do for our 13 boards and commissions that advise Pierce County Human Services and you on funding decisions and policy priorities that we make. And then finally, under this theme, we are doing a lot more recently around providing technical assistance to our provider community. The fourth need that we are proposing to meet with these expenditures is balancing our department needs with central service costs within constrained administrative rates. So let me... So let me explain that a little bit. As I said earlier, we are primarily funded by state and federal funds, or federal grants, and then we also have some local fees and taxes. Many of those local fees and taxes have constraints around them set by the state government or by the county. And then all of our federal and state grants have constraints around them in terms of how we can spend those dollars. So we are, we have a finite amount of dollars that we can spend on administrative costs in the county writ large. So as the central service charges vary up and down, and we saw a pretty significant increase in those in the last biennium, that leaves us with reduced or sort of a different number that we have to balance with. What we've done is really scrubbed our budget to make sure that we are allocating direct services where we can and program services where we can, paying the central service charges that we and other departments pay, and then using the rest of those administrative dollars to maximize the support that we can provide as a department. I will note here, you probably heard from Gary last week or in the past about the methodology used by the county to allocate central service charges across departments. It's largely based on transactional costs. So one of the reasons that our dollars, our charges for central services went up so dramatically are directly related to the ARPA dollars and the pandemic response that we had. So, for example, the rental assistance program, those transactions counted in how you allocate or distribute central service charges. Likewise, and this gets to a question that you asked, Councilmember Hitchen, is we use transactions as a way to allocate our staff internally, our fiscal staff. So when we have fiscal staff that are working on opioid program and behavioral health and Community Services Division, we look at the proportional share of transactional costs among those, and that's the number of contracts, the number of invoices are probably basically what that means. Then we allocate FTEs from our fiscal team across accordingly. So I think Lee Beth, you had that question too about allocations. Number five is talks about meeting our reliance on demand for data analytics and program research. I'm really excited about this one. Gary and Julie have created a really strong data team in our finance department, county's finance department, and we have been excited to partner with them on a lot of projects, particularly around our homeless efforts and behavioral health services. So if you remember, in our homeless programs, we have the provider scorecards that you've been hearing about. We're getting ready to launch those publicly in the next, I think, couple of weeks, actually. And then we also have the dashboards that are aligned with our comprehensive plan to end homelessness. Those are all happening in partnership with the data team in the finance department, but that's creating an appetite in our department and amongst our providers and our other constituencies for more database decision-making, data reporting, and we're doing more and more to push those out onto our website and use those in our decision-making. One last thing around data is that we have made a lot of progress in the last year in partnering with organizations around the country who are doing randomized control studies. So we are measuring where we don't have information, where we think we have a great idea about how to serve our community. We're partnering up with evaluators and researchers across the country to help us measure the effectiveness of those programs. So we're really excited about that body of work. Number six, we are just managing a higher number of contracts. We had over 300 contracts just this year alone with our provider community. You've heard me and you've heard Gary talk a lot about the contracting process, and we are building some, continuing to build discipline around that, which requires more internal focus and more internal capacity, frankly. So you'll see some of that reflected in the decision packages. Number seven focuses on empowering staff to drive exceptional performance. We marked this as partially addressed because I would imagine that our staff are happy to see some of the additional FTEs that we're proposing here that will allow us to build capacity. And what that capacity will help us do is be able to cross-train, let people go on vacation without work piling up so somebody else can take on those duties, or they can potentially go to a conference, or they can go out into the field if they need to. So just providing additional capacity so staff have a little breathing room, frankly, to do their jobs better. But there's more that we could do. We want, we continue to be working towards trying to build capacity so that we have tuition reimbursement available for our staff. We're not there yet, but we'll get there. Again, that goes back to the constraints that we have within our fund sources. In one division, really limit what we can do across all divisions. So while ADR might have lots of money to do things, our community, our Community Action Program, our CAP program, is more restricted in an administrative dollar. So it would be unfair, right, to allow staff who work for ADR to have things that we can't offer across the division, across the department. So we're grappling through that a little bit. Number eight is reducing barriers to services faced by many of our clients. You'll hear me talk more about this when I, at the end of the presentation, where we talk about DEI efforts. But this is generally speaking to our efforts around language access and providing more outreach out into the community. And then finally, another critical need and challenge is recognizing and serving the rapid growth of populations. This around homelessness, and this is just acknowledging what we've talked about often, which is we are investing a lot in our homeless system. We are having success getting people housed and off of the streets of our city, and our city and our communities across the county. It's not happening quickly enough. The rate at people, at which people are falling into homelessness is expanding faster than we can provide services to them. So while we have a lot of work we need to do to get more efficient and to make sure that we're providing the best services and to the right people, that's just one thing that we're going to be continuing to chase, frankly. I came across a fact from the General Accounting Office recently that said for every $100 that rent goes up in a community, homelessness increases by about 9%. So I think that's just an important fact to keep in mind. I'll pause again because I just shared a lot of context with you, if there are any questions.
Thank you. And this slide will translate to the decision packages that we're going to go into detail on, so we're going to hear how the director and the executive actually propose fully addressing these items or partially addressing these items. So we're going to get into more detail, but what questions do any members have about what we've heard so far? Director Moss, I'm going to, yeah, I'll take it now. And I might need Director Robinson to answer this question. One of your decision package requests that is not proposed to be funded is tuition reimbursement. You started to get into it, which is why I'm going to talk about it now, to make sure we understand. You talked about the complication of state and federal funds, and one of your special funds may, may allow the expense of, say, a tuition reimbursement as an employee retention tool or an employee compensation tool, but another fund might not in your division. Wanted to ask Director Robinson, what is the tuition reimbursement policy for county government for all employees?
Gary Robinson with the Finance Department. There is a policy that the county has for tuition reimbursement up to $3,000 per calendar year. So an individual employee or a manager could look at opportunity for an employee to gain background that can assist them in performing their duties, and then a request would be submitted to the Human Resources Department, and then a financial review with the Finance Department to authorize that reimbursement. The reimbursement is made at the time that the employee completes satisfactory completion with a passing grade of the courses in which they're enrolled, and that can roll forward. There has been an emphasis upon the utilization of that capacity for classes that are directly related to the duties that an employee is performing. So at the Human Services Department, we within Finance believe that federal funds can be used for tuition reimbursement if it's related to the responsibility of the employee for the services that they're performing that are associated with the grant. I raise that for you as an example, because there have been on occasion employees who are requesting tuition reimbursement for completion of a degree program. And for a degree program, there may be courses that are required to receive the degree that may not be directly related to the performance of the employee in their, in their job. So that would be an evaluation that the Human Resources Department would take a look at. For department budgets, there is not, in a department budget, necessarily a identified component of resources that have been made available for tuition reimbursement. It's usually within the aggregate portion of the budget that a manager would indicate that they have capacity to cover the tuition reimbursement. The other complementary education that is supported by federal funds and also supported with county funds would be if an employee is attending a conference, and oftentimes in a conference setting, there is additional education that's provided, usually targeted on a specific topic area. But there are, in many cases, education or background that an employee can benefit from by conference attendance.
Thank you. So I want to be really clear. Director Moss, do your employees have access to tuition reimbursement consistent with the county policy, or because of available funds, your team does not have access to tuition reimbursement?
My understanding is that we would have to work with the Human Resources Department to determine if something's eligible, and we absolutely have the protocols in place for it. From my perspective, we have an equity issue within our department, so that's what we're struggling with, in how do we allow that for some divisions that might have that fiscal capacity where others don't. So it's not a matter of mechanics necessarily.
It's the color of the money, it sounds like. And so if you had more flexible dollars to provide that, that compensation?
Potentially, yes.
Just want to make sure we understand what the difference is. Thank you. Councilmember Hoover?
Thank you, Chair. On that aspect, is there a lateral move? So if someone is in one department and wants to take a course that could advance them to a different department, although it's not related to the current position, but one that they are looking towards earning?
It's, I don't see why not. It's never come up, but that's an interesting suggestion.
Then I also struggle with, you know, what's the role of the taxpayer paying for someone else like that? It's not like we're a private entity. And I did have, if I can find out, one other question, it's not related to this part, but you had said the GAO said the $100 increases homelessness 9%. Was there any context as to what causes that $100 increase through, what were the forces that caused that landlord to need to increase that rent, the $100?
Yeah, I don't have that at the tip of my finger, so I can certainly get more information about that particular GAO research.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I think we're ready to go on, Director Moss.
Okay. We're on Slide 8. This is where you asked us to share a little bit more about our department priorities. So towards the end of this year, we've been working on a refresh of our agency strategic plan. We had a strategic plan created in 2018, shortly before I got here, a five-year strategic plan that was scheduled to be complete at the end of 2022. As you all know, that sort of blew out of the water with pandemic, so we didn't spend a lot of time attending to that strategic plan. Because of that, we decided that it was important to take a look at it and refresh it, not necessarily do a whole rewrite at this point, but we did a refresh of our strategic plan that is meant to be our guiding focus for the next couple of years, and then our plan is to rewrite our strategic plan in 2025. So you don't have them yet, but Carrie is getting to you these nifty little two-page cardstock summaries of our new strategic plan that show our areas of focus, which are the three areas that you see here, working together for impact, meeting community needs, and serving our community, and then the specific goals that we have under each of those impact areas of focus. So you can read that at your leisure, but it's great. It's got a lot of our new colors that you've seen in a couple of the new presentations that have been made to you recently in the last week or so, and it has one of those, what are they called, QR codes, so you can go look at the whole strategic plan. I'm pretty proud of that. So that's coming to you soon. But again, what you'll see in our budget is that we use these priorities and these goals to orient what we focused on and what we brought forward as the most important decision packages to Executive Dan Meyer and to you today. Okay, are we ready to talk about decision packages? Slide 9?
We are. We are. So note, I'm sorry, Director Moss, so note, I believe how you're going to talk about it is different than it shows up in our page.
Yeah.
In order for us to follow along, I don't know if you or your phone friend might be able to note the fund, because we have it in the package by fund, and that's how we can quickly reference it.
Yeah, we organize by priority based on the template, the presentation template.
We'll do the best we can. I just want to make sure we can follow.
Yeah, I'm not sure how I can help you because I don't have that document.
We just have to go.
Okay. So one thing we do have for you, as a handout that I can provide to you, is a crosswalk between our, that shows by decision package where it sits and which fund and the FTEs, but you, it looks like you kind of have that here. I just want to read this real quick. How do you propose we do this, Chair Mello?
Let's.
We don't have any general.
Let's use, let's use your PowerPoint and go a little slower than you normally do because we're going to have to find it in our worksheet.
Yeah.
And Julie, I think, knows the worksheet also really well and might be able to help note which fund we're talking about.
Do you have a suggestion?
I think it's going to be really beneficial for you to understand the decision packages from Director Moss's presentation, because it's presented strategically, it's presented at, this spreadsheet breaks it out by funding source.
Right.
Which is a pretty detailed level, and it's a little bit more complicated. So all the detail is here, but Director Moss's presentation provides decision packages at a holistic and more of a strategic level, which I think having that background will assist you in understanding the detail in the spreadsheet.
I appreciate that recommendation and that insight. Let's try it that way.
Okay, give it a go. So we have 27 decision packages in the next three slides that we're going to walk through. I'm not going to spend, well, that we're going to walk through. They total, as I've mentioned to you before, about $9.6 million. One thing I'll point out is the decision packages in front of you do not have the ARPA funds. So the ARPA funds are treated separately from our decision packages, and we talk about those at the end of my presentation. Another grounding conversation I want to have is that there's sort of a general flavor here. I talked to you earlier about the priorities, and you can see on the right-hand side of our slides that we indicate where appropriate the specific council priority that we're addressing. There are some that have not applicable, and those, I would say, can be generally categorized as administrative or fiscal support for a program or overall program expansion due to growing demand or growing clients, client numbers. The other general characterization I want to talk about before I go into the detail is, or two more, I guess I would say. One is that there are some, you've already noted in your review of our decision packages that there are some partial FTEs, and again, that goes back to how we allocate our fiscal team FTEs. And then the other thing I want to say is that there's a lot of notice or notification, or there's a lot of decision packages where we are moving from a staff position that already exists, but exists as a limited duration position, and our proposal is to make those permanent. permanent. This builds on the theme that I talked about earlier, where we were in reaction mode during COVID, and we hired some people not knowing what the future held. So we hired them on a temporary basis, not knowing what the revenue streams would look like, or if we had a need for that program ongoing. Now that we've, we are coming out of the pandemic, we have a much better sense of our permanent funding in the next six to 10 years. We also know about the need. So in strategic areas, we are continuing limited duration positions, but there are many that we are asking to be converted into career service positions. So the first of the 27 decision packages in here is for our community services programs. And I'm, I'm not going to try to orient you back to your slide, but you might be able to find it if, as I talk more about this. This is to convert one position to limited duration and to add an additional position. No, I'm sorry, this is eviction prevention, just converting one position to a career service. This was a grant accountant assistance. So we have GA1 and GA2, those are grant accountants. And our GAs are generally focused on the big grants coming into our division and tracking our budget overall. Grant account assistants, GAA1 and 2s, are the ones that are processing invoices on a daily basis and working more day-to-day with our programs once the contracts are created. So money coming in is our GAs, money going out is our GAAAs, just to help you keep those straight. So this is for our grant, a grant accounting assistant who works within our eviction prevention program. As you know, the eviction prevention program came out of our rental assistance program, which was ginormous. Now it's much more modest, but there's ongoing accounting that's needed around the relationship that we have with our two providers for that program and the tracking that we do back to our primary funder for that program. The next one I want to talk about is Hu, yeah, how do you?
Well, let's get through this slide.
Okay. The next one I want to talk about is Human Services Administration. This is again a conversion. We hired a grants coordinator position at the beginning of 2020. We are now in a position where we are confident that not only is she helping us bring in additional dollars to our department, but we have the funding to sustain her position over time on a permanent basis. You've heard Trish talk to you in the past. She's actually taken on a lot of the work around our refugee support programs. But in her day-to-day job, Trish has been successful in helping us bring in approximately $14 million in continuing and new revenue to our department since she started with us in 2020. The third DP on this slide is within our community action and community services. So this is a grant accountant, so in our fiscal team, that is spanning the work over those two divisions, primarily focused on our pasta dollars and our opioid funds. Again, doing some of that day-to-day fiscal tracking and monitoring and processing. And that is a new position. The fourth one that we have on this slide is for our Aging and Disability Resources Team. And this is adding a whole new team within ADR to primarily do that Medicaid case management, provide that Medicaid case management. This gets back to that expansion of the senior population that we talked about. We, this is closely forecasted by our partners at DSHS in Olympia. And we predict needing, over the course of the biennium, this is not a January ad, but over the course of the biennium, needing to hire at least 13 new positions to support increasing caseload. I will note that this 13 FTEs also includes, I believe it's a .5 for Office Administrative Assistance Services and a .5 for Supported Employment. And I'll talk about Supported Employment a little further in the presentation. The next one is also for Aging and Disability Services, and this is to increase compensation for our nonrepresented managers and leaders in this program. So the, we went through a recent exercise with the human, with HR, where we identified a way to create a specialty pay assignment for our Medicaid case management staff who are represented. And so we bargained this with their union to allow them to have a specialty pay for those who are, have that additional responsibility of going into clients' homes. So not only is that a, was that a pretty significant health risk or health impact to our caseworkers over the last few years, but it's just an added level of responsibility that is unique to this particular body of individuals who are client, serving clients, not only serving clients, which comes with its own extra body of work, but many of our client, our staff do that in an office setting. These individuals are going into our clients' homes in a one-on-one basis, working with clients in a very vulnerable setting. So we were successful in working with our, our, our union representatives to negotiate a specialty pay that recognizes that extra body of work. So this decision package allows us to apply that same specialty pay to the supervisors and leadership of that team, recognizing that they too are spending time in the field and supervising that body of work. The sixth one you have on this slide, AD, also for ADR, is adding a new GAA2. Remember, that's the day-to-day detail fiscal staff to support, again, that growing Aging and Disability Resources Division. And then finally, another GA is, a grant accountant is added to our Community Action Program so that we can better manage that team. As it continues to grow, we need to add more GAs to supervise the work of the GAAAs. Okay, I'll pause there. Those are our first, we got through the first seven.
You're doing great. Councilor Hoover?
Thank you, Chair. On the first one with the GA and the GAA1.
Yeah.
Are there added responsibilities for the GAA1? Are there, are there just taking paperwork and pushing it through? Is there more training needed, or is this kind of a repetitive kind of position?
It's, the reason that we're at, was somebody else going to say something?
Jackie was.
Oh, cool.
It's just me, if you need me.
Go ahead. No, you, you got an answer?
Oh, thank you.
This is her team. She should answer this.
The grants, the grant accountant assistant 2s are transactional, so they're pushing supplier payments through the system and getting our providers paid. The GA1s work mostly to report up and complete draws from the funders. So they function on the revenue side, which requires a level of reconciliation of those supplier payments.
So it's not like it's requiring any specialty? It's, you learn the system and then just implement?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And am I, as I look at the expansion on this, and I understand our population is, is growing and aging, are any of these programs geared to get folks independent of the government in these services, rather than, than expectation that this is available to, the, the services for, you know, in perpetuity?
Absolutely, yes. Many of our programs are designed to help individuals, households, families come, be, be in a place where they don't have to rely on ongoing government supports. I think that our minor home repair, our weatherization program, and even our energy assistance are great examples of that. The services within our Aging and Disability Resources Team are somewhat unique and different in that our, our role in providing ongoing services, that Medicaid Case Management Program is a good example, they are intended to be ongoing as long as needed, because we're actually preventing those individuals from going into a higher-cost institution. Some of those institutions might be paid for by Medicaid dollars, and that's why we're doing Medicaid Case Management, to keep them at a lower level of service in their home as long as possible. So it, it's not necessarily getting them off of services, it's preventing them from using additional services, if that helps.
Is that data measured in any way?
We, we do have data on that. I don't think Aaron's available in this call yet, but we absolutely are tracking what the success rates are of keeping people out of, and I shouldn't say that, institutionalized setting is absolutely appropriate for some people, and they may prefer that. But for those who can and choose to stay at home, we are measuring our success in keeping them in that home-based setting as long as possible. So I can get you that data.
And is there something where, if there is family that can assist? Well, granted, I think that's kind of a responsibility of family, but are there programs that help pay the family? It's kind of like with the daycare, when grandma takes care.
Yep. Yeah, I, I don't talk about it enough, but one of the programs under our ADR team that's run by Aaron is our Family Support Caregivers, Family Caregiver Support System. So we do a lot of things, providing respite opportunities, providing training to them. We also allow for excursions where we just recognize the value of our family volunteers who are caring for elder or disabled individuals in their home and of their own volition.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilor Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the deep dive. I know we're only on the first slide of this, there's more to come. But I want, I just wanted to highlight, one of the things, as I was looking through in comparison to our council priorities, the NA, what, the way you described it is different than how I interpreted it. And so I just wanted to flag that. So on all our council priorities, aging was not on, I don't think any of us discussed our aging population in detail, and you do, it's your largest line item, it's the highest number of FTEs. So when I saw this, it totally made sense that you had these NAs on here. It was concerning at the same time, because I was like, here's our priorities reflecting of the work. I was like, oh, yeah. I mean, we have, and I've, I have said this multiple times, that my 2030, 25% of our population will be over the age of 60, and yet it wasn't a, it wasn't one that rose the level. So that was my disconnect. So if anybody was looking at this and going, wow, what's Human Services doing that the council wasn't interested in? It's like, well, we, we, we had to narrow our, our priorities. We, we actually narrowed it down to, to the, the eight, I think, who we have, which was still a lot of priorities. So I appreciate that. And continue to learn more about what our ADR programs are doing, and very interested in the, kind of splitting the two. So I'm looking forward to kind of getting more detail on that. Thank you.
Thank you. I, my two cents on that is, we do have a lot of resources going to ADR, it's really important. Oftentimes, what policymaker priorities are, are things that aren't going very well or need more attention.
Sure.
So the squeaky wheel gets the oil. The ADR program can certainly always do more. There's a big need with an aging population. It's not the squeaky wheel right now. The, the council priorities that we've noted are, are the squeaky wheel, so to speak. So that, that's, not everything can be a priority. Some things got to keep humming along and one foot in front of the other. So thank you, thank you for noting that. Councilor Herrera?
Thank you, Chair. And I did have some questions on the NA in relations to our priorities. So great conversation, and that answered some of my questions and makes absolute sense. So thank you.
I concur. Thank you. Director Moss, a few questions on this slide. The first one, eviction prevention. In listening to you, the request is to convert this from a limited-duration grant accountant assistant to career service. This acknowledges that the eviction prevention work is going to be an ongoing program, albeit less, because we have significantly less federal resources for this, but there's, there's still resources flowing?
Correct.
So this is acknowledging it's going to be an ongoing program of the division?
Absolutely. And the way that we're funding this program is through the addition that the state legislature made in the last year to the document recording fee set aside? So it's the state share of the document recording fee that comes back to Pierce County?
That's great to hear, and that makes sense to me. And again, and you have your staff on the line. So my, my follow-up question to that, Director Moss, and I don't see it in, in other slides, but I'm happy to hold it if, if I'm missing it. Totally understand the need for the grant accountant assistant. There's also a DP request in Fund 133 to continue two limited-duration social service program specialists for the eviction program.
Yep.
The eviction prevention program, again, Fund 133. The department's request was two, the executive's proposal is to fund one. My question is, why would we keep this as limited duration and not career service? And what are we not going to be able to do if you don't get both bodies that the department requested?
So I don't think, so the, the one that you're asking about is included in the decision package on the top one on page 11. So we'll get to that one.
Okay.
The, the language is a little bit general, but I can give you more specifics there, but that's, that's where we address this. I think I'll have to add, I'll have to get back to you, though, about how we made the decisions about which ones are permanent versus which ones are limited duration. So I might not be able to answer that one for you today.
Okay, we'll flag that.
Okay.
Next question, Director Moss. Thank you for explaining the Aging and Disability Resource increase in need. I want to make sure we're tracking, the decision package shows all of that, that expense being offset. And just want to make sure we're tracking, that offset is through Medicaid reimbursements? Is that how it's offset?
Correct.
Thank you. And then the second item on this page, you start, you, you were talking about the Human Services Administration, the converting this limited-duration grants coordinator position to career service. You started to list some of the important functions of this career service individual. I heard immigrant and refugee work.
Mm-hmm.
And then my, could you, could you restate the, the high-level functions that this person will be taking on?
I didn't talk about functions so much as just acknowledge the fact that our grants coordinator has able, been able to secure continued or new funding in the amount of $14 million since she started with us in 2020. So just acknowledging the fact that there isn't, there is a value add to having a grants administrator in our program. What she does is works with our staff who write annual or biennial applications to our state and federal funders, so helping us become more successful in, in writing better grant applications where those are needed. And also regularly searching with our staff and with some of you, actually, around potential grant opportunities to bring additional revenues and programs to our department.
That makes a lot of sense. I'm glad I asked. So it's, it's not confined, it's not confined to just one division of?
No, it's across our department.
That's great.
Yes. And if you, if you go way back in our history, well, way back to 2018, 2019, this came out of that Public Consulting Group study, as one of the recommendations to increase the stability of the Pierce County Human Services, particularly from an administrative side that, and there was a recognition from Executive Dan Meyer and from Gary and his team that adding that additional capacity in a grants coordinator position would be something worth trying, and then we would come back to assess the success of it at a later point in time. And that's where we're at, at this point.
Thank you for explaining that.
Mm-hmm.
I think we're ready to go on to your slide 10.
All right, slide 10. The first decision package on this page is within our community services programs. This is adding program staff for affordable housing. I'm, I'm not going to go into too many details on the affordable housing, because you all have been briefed multiple times on the Housing Action Strategy. And our, our proposal on how we need to evolve our Community Development Corporation, which is our sort of non, nonprofit, non-governmental branch that can manage some of the funds to effectively implement recommendations from the Housing Action Strategy. So that's what this particular position is meant to do. Okay?
I'll let you get through this slide, I'm certain you're going to get questions.
All right, very good. The second one is across the department, and this is an investment that we are making in the Finance Department. So this is one of those cross-department transfers where we are adding capacity within Julie's team to help oversee the procurement and contract work that happens within our department. Again, you've heard me and Gary talk about this a lot, about the expanded work that we are doing in partnership to ensure that our contracts and our procurement processes are run effectively. And we can tell you, to a day and to a contract, what the status is of each of our 300 contracts in our department at any given time. In order to keep In order to keep that level of accountability, we need to add one more procurement and contract specialist to that team. The third decision package here is for our Behavioral Health Program. And this one, I might have to ask Jackie to help me explain if you have questions because it's a zero amount, because it's moving money for our therapeutic courts from District Court to Superior Court. It's not all the money, but it's just shifting money between those two therapeutic court. And Gary and Julie may have more answers for you there, more description for you there. The fourth one is a proposal to use a portion of our opioid settlement dollars that are coming to Pierce County government to pay for medical examiner, half of a pathologist in the medical examiner's office. Unfortunately, you all have heard from our medical examiner regularly that many of the deaths that they are investigating right now are due to fentanyl overdoses, and they are behind. And it is a tragic fact that we need to keep up with that work. So this is a proposal to take some of that money to expand their pathology capacity. The fifth decision package on this sheet is for our Developmental Disabilities Division is what I'm proposing. So Developmental Disabilities is a suite of programs that currently sits within our Aging and Disability Resources Division. We are proposing to elevate that to its own division. You saw in the FTEs that it is a significant size in and of itself already. It's about, represents about 12 FTEs. This is indirect work, so they're not doing direct client work, but they're managing lots of contracts. Councilmember Hitchens, you talked about wanting to know more about our ADR team. I would highly encourage you to follow up with us afterwards. Bruce and I just recently both went on site visits for our Supported Employment Program, and it's really cool to see some of the providers out in the community and some of the partnerships we have with businesses around hosting Supported Employment Individuals. And so I just, I encourage you all to do that. So in addition to Supported Employment, we have the K-12 to Community Transition Program. We have a Community Inclusion Program, and then our ESIT Program, Early Support for Infants and Toddlers. So there's a lot going on in our DD Division. The population that they're serving is growing. We're seeing a lot of enrollment growth in our programs. And then there's also additional monitoring requirements coming from our funders at the state level, all which really compelled us to make this request to create a new division for this department or this program. The sixth decision package on this slide is for our ECAP Program. You've heard us talk a lot about ECAP. We have seven sites across the county where we provide ECAP. We are not the only ECAP provider in Pierce County. As an example, Bates Technical College also has about 300 ECAP slots that they operate. Some of our larger school districts run their own ECAP programs. There are also some independent standalone childcare providers who operate ECAP in their programs. So we are one of many providers in Pierce County. We partner primarily with smaller and more rural communities, University Place being the exception, and South Hill potentially, but where they need support in developing those ECAP sites. Of our seven sites, we are proposing this year, in fact, we've already begun the process of converting from a half-day program to a school-day program. So where we used to be able to run two classes, an AM and a PM, on these two sites, it's Eatonville and Ordin, we're moving to a full-day program. What's great about that is not only is it better for the kiddos because they have more access to high-quality education pre-kindergarten, but it's also much easier for parents to navigate. Rather than managing pick-up and drop-off for a kid for a three-and-a-half-hour program, it's more aligned with a school day, so they can do pick-up and drop-off in alignment with other school-aged kids that they might have at the school nearby. It also allows them to actually have a job potentially in the middle of that day, so it's easier for parents who are working to manage the pick-up and drop-off for our kiddos. And it also, doing so in these two sites recognizes that we had not as much demand for half-day programs in those smaller communities, but we're already seeing a huge demand and a waitlist for those two full-day programs. So we're really excited about expanding to full day for those two programs. The last, and that requires additional staff support so that we have additional full-day support staff that are there primarily doing, I believe that the staff we're proposing to add here are family educators who are working with those families. And then finally, this last one, again, is a little bit of a fiscal detail, I guess, where we're proposing to use the Puget Sound Taxpayer Accountability Dollars, our PASTA funds, to support that additional cost of ECAP and additional expenses related to the ECAP program. Okay, I'll pause there.
Thank you. Questions about this slide? We'll begin with Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. On the ECAP and expanding to full day, I'm more of the impression that it's better for the child to be home with the family than at an institution. And for some, it kind of becomes a babysitting service. Is there a program that reimburses a parent that chooses to keep the child at home rather than send them off to the school and it saves, so that they're taking care of the child?
Yeah, so that absolutely is the ideal environment for children who have the ability to stay home and have a parent who can stay home with them. I believe that the childcare tax credit that was even expanded under COVID was meant to recognize that value. So I think that's more of a policy determination that's made at the federal level than at a state or local level. When kids need to be in care because of a parent's economic realities or something else, it's better if they are in a high-quality program that gets them ready for school and also recognizes sort of their developmental needs, depending on their age. So ECAP and all of the work that happens in high-quality childcare is about sort of doing the next best thing after kids are with their parents, and that is providing that high-quality, age-appropriate, developmentally appropriate care.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll go to Councilmember Hitchens, and then we're going to go to Councilmember Denson after that over Zoom. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to suggest the reverse of that, but I will start, and I'll start with ECAP because that's what we just left off with. So I had two specific questions. One is, for these programs, did you talk to Bertha 25 or have any conversation with them? Just curious if they chimed in on these two ideas? Because I don't always make.
I, yeah, I know. And I haven't been at their meetings recently. I know that we talked about it with Carol. I believe she shared that with Bertha 25. I'm not sure of the nature of the conversations that they had, but I can find out.
Okay. I just, because with pasta dollars, there's some, just wanted to check on that. And then the second, and I keep, I keep forgetting that we have ECAP funded through a lot of different partners. Is there a map? Like, do we have a countywide where they are and who funds them, just so I understand? Because I look at this, and I look at where we have county-run funded programs, and I go, well, what about this area, this area, and this area? And who's funding them? You know, because they are such a wonderful resource for our young people to get ready for school, get the socialization, especially after COVID. It was really apparent, we had some kids that just didn't know how to socialize at all because playdates went away. And so I really think that expanding ECAP is important. So I'm just, understanding where they are might be helpful with some of my questioning that I sent away.
Yeah, that's a great question, and I think that will be helpful to put our program in context as well. I would be happy to call some of my old colleagues at DCYF and get that for you.
Okay, that would be good. And then to get off of ECAP, I just wanted to better understand the very first item, the affordable housing. That is staff. Are they doing all affordable housing? Or is there a support for shape in that part? Is it just helping to navigate, actually figuring out ways to build? Like, what are they doing around affordable housing with these staff?
Yeah, so I'm going to queue up Jackie to give us more details about what goes into that 843,000, how many FTEs it is. But I can tell you, generally, the work that they're doing within our Affordable Housing Team is separate from shape. They partner, absolutely, but this is separate from shape. And what they're doing is managing the competitive bid processes for affordable housing projects. Those dollars are increasing now, particularly with the Affordable Housing Tax. So we're going to see more, an expanded body of work happening there. They're also working in close partnership with Planning and Public Works around implementation of many of those sort of county-level strategies that are involved, that are anticipated in the Housing Action Strategy.
Okay. And did Jackie have more to add? She turned her camera on.
Hi, yes, I just wanted to provide a little detail around those positions. There are four positions in that dollar amount. One limited-duration position that we're converting, program specialist. One new program specialist, three, and two new program specialist twos.
And is, and the majority of this is supporting the RFP process, working with providers, the blending and brading of funds that we know that go into these programs, working on identifying projects, like that holistic, I want to build a house, or I want to build an apartment complex, how do I make it happen type thing? So providers will be able to work with us, will put out RFPs?
Yeah, and it's also, going back to the Housing Action Strategy, in addition to the work with Planning and Public Works, it's about developing the capacity of the Community Development Corporation. So that could contemplate the Community Land Trust that we've talked about, so building out that capacity.
Okay. And then separate than the Unified Regional, because this is housing, this is separate from the URA conversation, which I think comes up on a different slide?
Yes, you are correct. The biggest overlap there is around permanent supportive housing, but yes.
Okay. And then my third question on this slide is regards to opioid settlement dollars. I really, I absolutely agree, it's a need to have capacity at the medical examiners. I'm really struggling to say that opioid settlement dollars that were given to prevent people being used to fund after they're already passed. So that's the disconnect I'm really struggling with. However, I understand the data is important, so I think I'm going to be looking to try and find another place because I feel like we have very limited dollars that are pretty, like, they're pretty flexible. And so I know there's a need. I also really struggle because I have so little to actually go out and work with people that are still alive to work on the prevention side. So just wanted to flag that as we kind of move forward as a concern.
That's a fair point, and I appreciate you bringing up the importance of data because we do, we are learning a lot, and we are poised to be in a closer partnership with the medical examiner's office to learn about the nature of the overdoses, the demographics of the individuals, and the locations. And I think those are all important pieces of information to help us work in that prevention area. But I see your point.
Yeah. And I think that's it for now. I'll look through my list and see where I am.
Just wanted to thank you. I'll be following up on a number of those things, but let's just stay on that last point while we're on the thread of the medical examiner. And I'll get to you here real soon, Councilmember Denson. So Director Moss, we really want to understand the proposal before we make changes to it. So can you maybe, can you state maybe differently why you or the executive believe that 50% of a pathologist should be spent with opioid dollars? I think the other thing some of us are struggling with is spending some of these funds, the opioid settlement funds, without having an allocation committee yet in place and having the experts in the room. We made a commitment to the community that we would be data-driven, have the experts in the room before we release these dollars, spend these dollars. Here we are, spending some dollars ahead of an allocation committee with subject matter experts in the room. So we're struggling a little bit with that, and would love to hear the case for spending opioid settlement dollars in this regard.
Okay. So the Opioid Abatement Council, which is set to finally convene for the first time in the next couple of weeks here, I'm really excited about that, is meant to bring together the jurisdictions across the county. And that's really a collaborative effort to compare notes on where individual organizations or jurisdictions are dedicating their dollars. Some of our local communities are talking about intervention as well as prevention. So I don't think that we are too far off the mark in terms of where we're spending locally. I believe, too, that there's some evidence that other communities across the state are using their settlement dollars in the same way. So I don't think we're out of, too far out of school in making this proposal. And I guess I would underscore what I already shared with Councilmember Hitchens, that having the data about the opioid deaths that are happening in our community is crucial for us and making sure that that is provided in a timely manner. I know that the medical examiner has gotten behind when they have a lot of deaths happening in one particular area or another around the investigative work that they do. So this will just allow them to be more timely in their work.
I appreciate that. I, I'm hearing the, I too am, I'm glad the auditor is helping convene the Opioid Abatement Council, and you are the representative of Pierce County on the Opioid Abatement Council. Perhaps I'm missing it, but I thought I've always been told that the Opioid Abatement Council is an auditing function. They're not the allocation committee. They're not the subject matter experts.
Correct.
Who are advising on the best use of the dollars to prevent, intervene. Those are two very different functions.
Yeah, so it provides, the Opioid Abatement Council, again, we're not there yet. We're going to be there soon. In my perspective, it provides this venue for us to compare notes about how all of our different jurisdictions propose to spend the dollars. Those are all autonomous decisions happening within individual jurisdictions. There will be some, in fact, we've already been contacted from some who don't want to pursue this individually, and they want to partner with the county, so we are working towards that proposal. And then the Opioid Abatement Council also, to your point, is really about collecting information and reporting that back to the organization that's tracking the settlement funds and meeting those goals. When you talk about an allocation committee, we have long proposed that our Behavioral Health Advisory Board would serve as that function of helping us determine how we use those opioid settlement dollars. So is that what you're asking about?
It is what I'm asking about. Thank you for reminding us about that. Are there dollars in your budget proposal to support you, subject matter experts, a subgroup of the Behavioral Health Advisory Group that are subject matter experts? Are there additional dollars needed to support that effort in this opioid space?
We, there is a provision in the settlement that sets aside administrative dollars. We are proposing to use a portion of those administrative dollars, of course, to pay for the auditor's office, but we're also asking for an additional staff person within our Behavioral Health Division to help us coordinate that work.
Okay, and we'll see that.
I think that's on the next slide.
Thank you. Lots to keep, thank you. Thank you for being patient with us as we understand the proposal.
The last slide. It's on slide 12.
Okay, we'll get to that. Thank you. Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you. And it's great, actually, going late in the conversation because a lot of my questions have been addressed. Thank you, Director Moss, for all your work. I actually wanted to talk a little bit about the Community Development Corporation, and my question may be premature, so you can let me know if that's the case. I appreciate them being staffed up for some additional resources going to their work. I wanted to know what funding would be provided to the Community Development Corporation in order to do some of that work? And in particular, I'm real interested in their ability to make loans, low-interest loans, for example, to preserve existing affordable housing or perhaps to create new affordable housing. Is that coming at some point?
I'm going to turn around. I feel like I'm talking, I think I see you this way. So it's a good question. It looks like you've already noted that we made a proposal to make a substantial investment for a Community Land Trust that Executive Dan Meyer chose not to put in his budget, given other constraints that he's seen in our budget. We understand that the Community Development Corporation will have the ability to manage our current program around home loans, home loans, that I believe is funded out of our Community Development Block Grant. So that's where we're seeing, and then we have the affordable housing dollars where we, the new affordable housing tax dollars where we owe you a proposal by the end of this year that could contemplate funding part of that initiative as well. Does that answer your question?
It does. That's great. There's definitely some projects that I know about and probably a lot out there that we don't know about, in particular, to preserve existing affordable housing. And I just, I know that's a high priority for us and wanting to make sure that this CDC group has, they have some unique tools in terms of being able to do loans, for example, and I want to make sure that we're giving them what they need to be able to achieve their objectives and ours. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thanks for asking about that. Back to Councilmember Kruber.
Thank you, Chair. If I could go back for a second to the medical examiner. I have to agree, I think knowing quicker how many folks we have lost to this is more of a tool to use in communicating to those who are still alive on how desperate the situation is with that. But I'm wondering, you know, at 355.5, that seems like a lot of money for a 50, you know, halftime. Is that, what's all included in that? And I'm wondering with some of the other numbers as well.
Mm-hmm.
It seems high.
Yeah, so this is a, I would, I can't speak to the details of the requirements of a pathologist, but keep in mind that this is a biennial number and it's a doctor position.
Okay. And yeah, so for the other ones too, biennial on that.
Correct.
Easy to skip that point. So, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Director Moss, the community service program is the first line item that does show up here that we've, several of us have asked about, to add program staff for affordable housing. All these dollars come out of Fund 192, I believe, is, and I know you have your staff on the line, all of these dollars come out of Fund 192, which is the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act. Am I reading it correctly?
I think there's one more. Jackie, do you want to speak to that?
All four of those positions are funded out of 192.
Okay.
192?
The new affordable housing tax.
Yeah, 192.
Ms. Demuth, is the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act Fund 192?
Oh, gosh, I'm sorry. Housing and Related Services Fund.
Yes. I don't, on the, on the decision package worksheet, we have, I don't see four FTEs, I see three FTEs. So if you could follow up and help us understand the proposal, you can do that later.
Absolutely.
You understand the question?
Yes, you're missing one position.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
And we're going to want to bear down on what those four new people, more specifically, are going to do. It's great to see the, we're all in on affordable housing. We need a bit more detail on, more specifically, what these four new humans are going to be doing, and I think council's going to want to weigh in a bit on the focus of those four new staff.
Got it.
It's great to see the proposal, though, and noting that this is taking money off the top for capacity building, much-needed capacity building, but taking money off the top of the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Act to build capacities so we can help the private sector and the nonprofit sector build more housing. But we need to understand the proposal much more. On this slide, Director Moss, I realize this may not be exactly your proposal, but it's on this slide, so I have to ask about it. This is where, the first time it shows up about transferring out the behavioral health, behavioral health and therapeutic courts dollars from district court to superior court. Who's going to be able to speak to that on behalf of the executive?
Julie Demuth can do that.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, morning. Good morning. Julie Demuth with the Finance Department. During our budget development process, we reviewed caseload data pertaining to therapeutic court programs. If you recall, in the current biennial budget, a total of six positions were added for district court to support their therapeutic court programs and creation of a new mental health court. In discussions we had with district court, our understanding is that, one, caseloads are low, attributed to changes in state legislation around drug possession and those types of charges. So, you know, they had a very successful DART program that was impacted by these legislative changes. So caseload for their therapeutic court programs are low. Additionally, the new commissioner position that was added, our understanding has been planning and working on establishing what they're calling a community court. In our review of the functions of a community court, cases that can go to a community court are not necessarily associated with behavioral health issues. It can be attributed to other social impacts, so not a direct tie to behavioral health. Due to the low caseloads and due to the community court not being 100% attributed to behavioral health issues, the decision was made to reduce the transfer of behavioral health sales tax funding to district court. So of the six positions, three positions remain funded by behavioral health sales tax, as well as some programmatic costs to support the therapeutic court program. Two positions are reduced, so they're proposed to be closed in the budget. And then the sixth position is the commissioner position. Funding for that position will come out of the general fund to support the broader areas that a community court would cover. So the transfer out of behavioral health was reduced for the two positions that are proposed to be closed, as well as the commissioner position. A transfer out from behavioral health and therapeutic courts was put in place to superior court to support their longstanding therapeutic court programs, which is eligible to receive behavioral health and therapeutic court sales tax funding. So in order to help reduce, reduce the level of budget reduction that was impacting superior court, some of their budget reduction was restored, and then with the assistance of the behavioral health and therapeutic court sales tax transfer into superior court, that enabled us to reduce their level of reduction even more.
Thank you for trying to explain that, Ms. Demuth. We have to spend a lot more time understanding that proposal. This is, that's a start. Certainly, I appreciate what I'm hearing about superior court. I need to learn a lot more and will do so offline, along with my colleagues. I'm, so, we'll have more conversation. I think that we can certainly spend more dollars in community courts. A lot of these are substance use disorder or mental health. I don't know that 100% of the diagnosis or reason for the crime needs to be related to that in order for it to be eligible. So I'm struggling with that a bit in order to preserve our general fund. And I'm also struggling with, the recent state law changes are just taking effect. We're not, the state is not allowing these drug crimes to be charged as felonies, so they're not going to go to superior court. If they get charged, they're going to go to district court, and here we are reducing the capacity, and that concerns me, when new laws are just taking place to charge these as gross misdemeanors in some cases, and we're now taking away the capacity from district court. So I'm concerned about that part of the proposal. So more to come, but thank you for helping us understand the proposal. Mr. Bokey?
Thank you, Chair Mello. I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page here. So this is a case where Section 4, Page 13, the budgeted transfers.
Hold on, let us get there.
So this is a, and I'm glad this is part of the budget because this really helps, especially now that we have some of these major funds that are, that are new. So on the budgeted transfer page under Behavioral Health, and it says, it says from 2 up there, so just go down, it's in alphabetical order, Behavioral Health and Therapeutic Courts Fund. You'll see one column is 2022-23 Budget. The total budgeted amount there to be transferred is $2,976,470. In the next biennium, it's $7,458,480. So I'll call your attention to the line on district court. The district court line in 2022-23 biennium is $1,726,220, and it'll be reduced to $8,898,800. So they will be receiving some, and then the superior court will go from not receiving any funding in the 20, in this biennium that we're currently in, to $998,500 in the next biennium. The superior court will be in tomorrow afternoon, and they can speak to this then. The district court, I believe, is scheduled sometime next week, and they can, and I'm sure they will speak to the funding or the drop in funding.
I do appreciate you pointing that out. Ms. Demuth, I'm sorry to keep calling you up, but you're very capable. Do you recall why we chose not to expend any behavioral health therapeutic courts fund dollars for superior court previously? As you noted, they have had a longstanding drug court in superior court. What, do you recall why we chose not to pay for, pay for those services that way previously?
I don't know that it was necessarily a deliberate decision. It just wasn't one that was brought to the table. So the funding that was provided to district court was to create a new court, expand their therapeutic court services. So it wasn't, superior courts, therapeutic courts have been in place for a number of years. So I think the funding in the current biennium addressed expansion, creation of new services, rather than looking to support existing services.
Okay. Great. And as noted, superior court is here tomorrow. We'll be able to engage in this conversation of how would we spend these dollars if the state is not causing, charging drug crimes in superior court as felonies? Well, you know, we can explore that more with superior court coming tomorrow. Thank you. Further questions on this slide? Director Moss, I think I'm going to suggest we take a brief recess for two reasons. One, we've been going at it for almost two hours, and I want to give you a break. And secondly, at 11:20, there's a
Oh, yeah.
emergency alert that is coming across the wires.
Yeah.
And so let's pause for that chaos that I understand may continue for 30 minutes from starting 11:20 onward, but we're not going to take that long of a break. So let's, let's recess until 11:26. Let's take a 10-minute recess. Let's recess until 11:26. Well, the council is back from its morning recess, and we're with the Human Services Director on her 2024-2025 budget proposal, and we also know that the emergency alert system is alive and well. I wanted to note, just before we move off this slide, Director Moss is on her Slide 10. Director Moss, I really appreciate the thinking and proposal of splitting off an eighth division focused on development of disabilities. It's a, I think, a really sound proposal. Really appreciate that coming forward as part of this budget proposal. Makes a lot of sense. I believe you're on your Slide 11, Director Moss.
Yes, thank you, Chair Mello. So I'm continuing with our decision package descriptions. I'll start off at the top of Slide 11 with the $600,000. This, you alluded to a couple of slides ago, Chair Mello, and this is, I guess what I would tell you is that when we write a decision package, there's lots of detail in the decision package, and then it gets condensed down into a few words. And I think you missed some nuances because over time, these words become all you see, but there's more behind it. So with that, this, this particular decision package contemplates two positions. It's not just about eviction prevention. This is contemplating the addition of a prevention supervisor, and that has become shorthand, for better or for worse, for the position that will take our lead effort around comprehensive plan to end homelessness. So this is the position, we're hiring this position right now, but this is continuing the position that we've started as a limited duration to, to help us focus on the comprehensive plan and expand our work into, more into prevention per the comprehensive plan direction. It also contemplates adding a convert, or continuing the limited duration position for eviction prevention. And I know I have an outstanding question that you asked, that I don't have an answer for you yet, but we'll get, about our decision to continue one as permanent and continue one as limited duration. So I'll get back to you on that. The second decision package in here is also for our community services program, and this is to add an additional program specialist two to support our community development block grant work. Our CDBG dollars do a lot of things. One of them is provide us for, with capacity to respond to administrative needs around, particularly around violence prevention and the miscellaneous current expense contracts. And as you just heard yesterday, we have new violence prevention contracts coming up. Those continue to grow in size, in number, because they're smaller in size. As with the MCEs, those smaller contracts require additional staffing support. So with that, we are requesting an additional staff person funded by our CDBG administrative dollars. The third DP on this slide is for Aging and Disability Resources, and this is merely to catch up our ADR staff, primarily our non-represented positions within ADR, to catch them up, to move them from what has historically been the equivalent of full-time at 37 and a half hours to a regular 40-hour work week. This is part of an initiative under Executive Dan Meyer to move all of our full-time positions to a traditional 40-hour work week. So we have funding within our Medicaid dollars to do that. The fourth, fourth description, our decision package here, also for community services, is converting our limited duration program position for our Housing Action Strategy to a career, career services position now funded under the new sales tax, the Marine Howard Affordable Housing Tax. So that is an existing position that we are changing to a different fund source. The Veterans Assistance Program, I understand that you had some questions about this one in particular. We are proposing to add a new veterans officer to our veterans team. As you saw in our FTE slides a few slides ago, we have four positions that currently run our veterans division. That's our manager, we have an administrative person, we have one person who really oversees a lot of the voucher support for our veterans, and then that fourth person spends most of his time interacting with the veteran court system and the individuals that are affiliated with our veteran court. What we're proposing with this fifth position is something that we learned during the pandemic is, not only during times of government shutdown, but just in general, there are lots of people that we could be serving who don't necessarily want to come downtown Tacoma to receive services. So for all the great work that we've done around establishing a veterans resource center at our office up on Pacific Avenue, we recognize that there are lots of veterans out there that we are not reaching right now. Because they either can't or choose not to come into the downtown core area, we were able to take advantage of some of the CARES dollars that we had early in the pandemic to purchase a resource van for our veterans program. It's pretty slick. It's actually outfitted as a mobile office, complete with Wi-Fi. And so what we are hoping to do is hire a person that can be dedicated to outreach services for our veteran community and take that van on the road, literally, and go out into our communities over on the peninsula and in South and East Pierce County, where we traditionally have seen not as much expenditure for our voucher program because, again, those clients aren't coming in. The data that Robert and his team have been looking at indicate that we're doing a really good job of reaching veterans and providing voucher support to them, those who live in Lakewood and Tacoma and the surrounding areas around I-5. And we're doing, we're getting less of them into the program from other areas. So we know there's a need, we just need to do a better job of getting out there and reaching them. So moving on to the fifth one here, I believe it is, sixth one, community services programs. This is asking for additional office assistance support for our community services. Again, this is the area where we see lots of growth within our affordable housing and homeless services. This is just adding administrative capacity so that we can sort of get ahead of the curve and be strong administratively. The next one there is increasing, is for our SHAPE program. So you asked earlier, Councilmember Hitchens, about SHAPE. This is the one decision package we have specific for SHAPE, and it is asking for This is the one decision package we have specific for SHAPE, and it is asking for the ability to increase the time of our second position. So there's Jason Gautier, who you hear from often, and then he has a staff person, a PS2, who works with him, Mary, and we're suggesting that we move her from halftime up to 36 hours per week. They're doing a lot of great work at SHAPE, and there's a lot more she could be doing. So, and she's willing to take on those additional hours. She was originally hired as a halftime position. And then the last decision package on this page is for our Community Action Program Division, and this is, again, taking an existing staff person, an OA2, I believe it is, to move it to career services, to continue supporting the development of our behavioral, I'm sorry, our Birth to 25 Advisory Board and the work that they're doing around pasta procurement and spending allocations.
Thank you. Questions on this Slide 11 of Decision Packages? Councilmember Hitchens?
Thank you, Chair. Excited to see the, I guess I'm going to call them mobile CVSO, the Veteran Service Officer. I've seen the van, been in the van, I've sat in the van. It seems like a nice way to actually have a face-to-face conversation and get to the parts of our county that do not have these services or people that can't access where we have them. My question is around the engagement with homeless veterans. And one of the things, thinking about how we get out into community where we identify, like our service providers might say, hey, there's somebody who's identified as a veteran. Are they going to be going out into literally the side of the road to a service, or are they going to a community center in Buckley? Which is fine, I'm just trying to figure out some of the more harder-to-reach veterans that are living in our community.
Yeah, no, I'm glad you asked that because the, part of the reason that we're putting this forward now is that it's coming out of our Ending Veterans Homeless Task Force recommendations that were finalized, gosh, was that in 2019, pre-pandemic? And so we very much want this to be both of those things, right? Working with our local jurisdictions to identify natural places where veterans convene, but also recognizing that a big part of the work of meeting underserved needs of our veterans is those who are chronically homeless and getting, and living on the streets actually likely have access to benefits that could help change their conditions. So providing this outreach van to be able to work with our contracted outreach client, outreach providers to meet directly with veterans who are on the streets.
Okay.
Get them connected to services. Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. This kind of relates, I believe, to Councilmember Hitchens. Several years ago, I asked the State VA, you know, why are there still veterans on the streets? And then they refuse help. And part of it was that maybe they had a background they didn't want to, that was an obstacle. Are you finding that some of the veterans are, or what percentage might be refusing services despite the one-on-one attempts to help? Are you find, do you have any stories on that?
Yeah, I think it really depends on each individual, and they all have unique stories about why they want to continue living on the streets. And it might not necessarily be on the streets, but it's tucked away. I think that there's a lot of post-traumatic stress disorder, untreated PTSD that we see in our veterans, particularly the older veterans that are living homeless on the streets. I think there's also substance abuse issues that they have, could potentially coming off of injuries as a result of their service and becoming dependent upon those pain relievers and the opioids that they've been prescribed in the past. So I think those are just two of the reasons that we see individuals who have been involved in the military are veterans who choose to live out on the streets. What I think we have the opportunity to do a better job of is connecting them with other veterans who have sought and found a different path. And so it's really about providing representatives that they can identify with, that can help encourage them about finding a different path to live somewhere that's not in the woods or in a tent.
Did you have like a percentage that you find that refuse, that you have to either, you know, work harder? Is that like one out of five, maybe, or two out of 12?
You know, I don't know, I know that our veterans team is working really, working right now on refining the veterans by-name list. So we actually have a by-name list that indicates all of the homeless veterans that we come in contact with, and I mean we in a very broad sense, right, all of our outreach teams, and who give us information so that we can bring them into the coordinated entry system around homelessness. So all of those individuals, we can tell how many places, how many times we're connecting with them and what the outcome of that is. So the outreach workers are putting their case notes in that by-name list, in the, into HMIS, that we can see when they were contacted, what they were offered, and what the result of that was. We can try to get that data for you, but I don't have that on the tip of my finger right now.
If it's handy. If you have enough on your plate. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera.
While we're on that subject, I had a couple of questions. So we know we've had the van, and this is basically using what it's intended to use for, to get out in the community.
Correct.
And I'm going to get somebody to do that. So is this a stopgap? Because, you know, there's a lot of, what Councilmember Cooper was talking about, some of the veterans that may refuse service or things like that. Does the county programs here, when it comes to veterans, does it serve veterans who separated from the military on bad terms, where it's less than an honorable, where right from the get-go, when that does happen from the military, they're told no, that they can have no services from the VA?
Yeah.
Is this a stopgap for those type of veterans? And then sometimes you find those veterans in homeless shelters who are always told no, and now here's someone saying yes, and they may not have known about that. Is that what maybe the mission of this could be?
So I'm just going to say Robert's name and the possibility that he's listening in and can jump on screen. So Robert Sheets is our veterans manager, so I'm going to try to answer this. You're right to bring out that their discharge status plays heavily in what kind of supports they have access to. So like VA benefits, our own county veteran relief fund is dependent upon discharge status. It was, it's set by state law, I believe, and there have been efforts in the past to adjust that discharge status language to allow it to be more broad. The question is, do you have, you need to match the revenue to the amount of need, right? So as long as we have a lot of veterans with the honorable discharge or the other types of discharge status that are currently allowable to spend those dollars, then it's hard to justify broadening that. However, what I will say is that we do have access to other services provided by partner organizations in our Veterans Resource Center that are allowed, that are offered to veterans outside of honorable discharge status. So it's sort of a nuance, and I think it's a case-by-case basis to understand what their discharge status is and then matching them to those services. So Robert and his team do a great job of working with veterans on an individual basis to do just exactly that.
Okay. Thank you.
Did he pop up anywhere?
He's not on.
Okay. We can get him to add more information if you want at a later time. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I just, I've had several conversations about that topic, and one of the things that I know Robert and his team have really kind of dived into is because they know all that the county offers, sometimes they become that trusted person who can make a contact, and they'll have the conversation. They may not qualify for the VA, they may not qualify for the veteran services, but they are also aware of the other services and social services, and they are able to start that conversation. So whether they were honorably or dishonorably discharged, they trust someone who's been in the service before they would trust someone who is not, right? And so I think that's one of the things that this could start to help and kind of change that tide. Again, that peer support, somebody who's been there, who understands the scope of the work that we have available, I think, could be beneficial.
Thank you. I'm going to stay on the veterans program real briefly and just be reassured by you, Director Moss, that on the, love what we're hearing about having someone actually be dedicated to the mobile outreach and get out of the four walls of the Resource Center and go to people, that all sounds wonderful. In your decision package, it talks about paying for that by reducing relief services budget.
Yeah, I picked up on that language, too. And again, that, thank you for reminding me about that. It gets back to where a long decision package gets condensed to a few words, so I would like to clarify. We originally proposed that package, I believe you have the original packages, to come out of fund balance because we are recognizing that the revenue for our veterans relief fund is going up faster than our expenditures. We're serving a lot of veterans, but we're not serving enough. So we are building up a fund balance in recognition of that. We recognize that we need to get out and find some more to serve, so that proposed us funding this outreach position. We originally asked for it to come from fund balance. Rightly so, finance corrected us that you should not use one-time funding, like fund balance, to fund an ongoing position, so it's coming out of our regular fund. That's what that language is indicating, that that was a signal from finance to us indicating that it's not coming out of fund balance, it's coming out of the general fund dollar, not, I'm sorry, the ongoing funding for our veterans relief fund. So while it is coming out of the regular annual dollars, we proposed it in recognition of the fact that we're not spending down those dollars because we need more staff to do the outreach. Does that help?
That helps. I think what I want to be reassured, and so just let me ask it just slightly differently. Great that we have outreach folks helping folks navigate to resources, that's essential. And your team in the field needs dollars to help solve problems, pay for rent, solve the different problems that they're facing. They can't just show up and be, I'm here to help, and then have nothing to help with?
Yeah.
Are there dollars, are we, are you confident we have sufficient dollars for your outreach folks to actually have something to give assistance?
If it would be helpful to you, we can certainly provide revenue and expenditure history, but yes, we are seeing a buildup of those fund balances because we're not fully expending, so we're proposing using some of our regular funds on staff so that we can spend down the rest of the dollars.
I don't need, I wanted to ask the question, I don't need follow-up.
Okay.
I wanted to hear that.
Okay.
Important that your team has resources to help solve problems on the ground. So I'm, I feel like I have the answer I need on that.
Okay.
Thank you. I want to come back to the first item on this slide, Director Moss. I think you said that there's two people in this $69,000, is that what I heard?
Yeah, and I'm going to ask Jackie to verify that for us.
Yes, that's correct.
One of them is a career service individual and one of them is limited duration, is that correct?
Yes, the intent of the decision package is to convert the existing limited duration to career service. That's the piece that's missing from our text here.
Okay, so they are both, they will both be permanent positions. One doesn't exist and one is, exists as a limited duration.
Okay, let's make that, let's make sure that's clear in the final budget.
Did I get that right, Jackie?
Yep, exactly.
Okay.
And I think you said one of these two people is the supervisor of the unit leading our implementation of our comprehensive plan to end homelessness. Did I, did we hear correctly?
Yes, Jackie, right? That's the conversion one.
Yes.
What the council recalls is the Garrett Nylund position?
Correct, yes.
As follow-up, I'm not going to, I don't think I'm going to ask you to do this now. You know how important homelessness is to you and this council. Can there be follow-up? I want to really understand what the, because there's so many different funds in your budget. I want to understand the humans working on homelessness, leading homelessness and working on homelessness, how they're funded, how many there are, and what fund sources they're coming from. I can kind of see that in the budget book, but I think they're spread over a couple of different funds. I just want to, just in homelessness and implementing the CPEH, what's the body count?
Yeah, we can work on getting you, maybe what would be helpful is an org chart as the team exists now and what it will look like with these additional FTEs that we're asking for.
Perfect.
Okay.
That would be very helpful.
Okay.
Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you. And I think this information, or that my question might be answered by that. So Chair Mello, thank you for that. I wanted to know if the person that's working on the comprehensive plan to end homelessness would also be staffing our continuum of care, or how that staffing works?
To be determined. We have, the continuum of care has lots of needs, as you know, and they're growing in terms of their responsibility, not responsibilities, but in terms of the level of work that they're doing relative to their HUD requirements. So I guess what I would say is that we have lots of staff within the homeless team that are supporting the continuum of care. We also have the pending question of the Uniform Regional Approach, which I'm getting ready to give you more information on, not in this meeting, but in a different meeting. And then we've got the Implementation Advisory Board. So all of that's in play, Councilmember Denson, and I think I can explain a lot of that when we give you the sort of before and after FTE picture, the organizational structure picture.
Excellent, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Director Moss, I think we're ready to move on to your Slide 12.
Okay, this is our last slide of decision packages, our last five of them. So Community Action Programs. Here, this is an easy one. We're asking to convert what we, a currently existing limited duration office assistant in our Energy Assistance Program to career service. As I told you before, that program is doing great work, serving thousands of families every year to support them with one-time annual assistance when they come up short in meeting their energy costs of their, to heat their homes. The second one is also for Community Action Programs. This is continuing, let me see, Jackie, is this another one where we're continuing limited duration?
Yes, that's correct.
For both an office assistant, too, and a social service supervisor. These are converting to permanent positions, Jackie?
Yes.
Okay, so again, I apologize, we're learning as we go, too. What we need to do is do a better job of giving you summary language that's similar across all of our decision packages. This is two positions that were, currently exist as limited duration that we are asking to be made permanent in our budget. The next one is Behavioral Health, again, a limited duration where we are, it's an existing position that we are asking to convert to career service. Opioid settlements, Councilmember Mello, you asked about this earlier. This is where we are asking to add a new position, does not exist yet, limited duration or otherwise, a social service specialist three position that will manage the planning, distribution, and contracting for our opioid abatement funds. If you recall, the opioid settlement contemplates, I think it's a ballpark of about $50 million coming to the county writ large over the next 15 years or so. About 40% of that is coming directly to Pierce County to manage on behalf of unincorporated Pierce County. So that's what this position contemplates focusing on, in addition to some of those partner dollars that will come to the county to manage on behalf of other jurisdictions who are receiving dollars directly. And then last but not least, we are proposing to add a supported employment position with, within our department, within the Human Services Administrative Division. So that's our back office functions. And the idea here is that this halftime position would support our administrative staff in our Soundview Building until we move to the new building, and it will happen there. So between this, so we have a halftime supported employment that we're asking for here, another halftime supported employment that we're asking for within our ADR Division, Aging and Disability Resources Division. Really excited about that. I mentioned earlier, Councilmember Hitchens, that we toured some of our supported employment programs across the county, and kind of parking lot conversation afterwards that Bruce and I had is why don't we do this in the county? We really need to demonstrate to our local private sector partners that it's possible and it's beneficial, not only to the individuals, but also to the organization. So we're really excited to be a part of that. So we're really excited to be a part of that. Our Director of Human Resources, Judy Archer, really leaned into this as well, so we have made presentations across departments talking about the benefits of supported employment. So I think you'll hear from some of my colleagues when they do their presentations, other requests for FTEs to support supported employment in other divisions as well. I believe Planning and Public Works and maybe Parks stand out. So that's it. And what I will say, I guess there's ways, how to summarize this, is that my total is $9.6 million. Lee Beth, during our break, pointed out that this is different than the total you see in your very detailed transaction-level list of decision packages. Part of that is because there's lots of adds and subtractions that I would characterize as accounting details that I did not address in my comments. My comments, as Julie DeMuth mentioned to you at the beginning, are really more at a strategic department level, and there's a lot of sort of adds and takeaways that even I'm not tracking frankly, but we can certainly work with your staff to provide a crosswalks to just validate for you that the numbers do square. So I guess, and just another reminder again, it's an art, not a science.
And the next three slides in your presentation sort of bring this home, the FTE count and how it comes together. Yeah, a lot of moving parts, and you did discuss a lot of the FTEs through your decision package explanation. So the next three slides may go a bit quicker because they've been referenced in large part, but we do want to make sure we understand. What questions do councilmembers have on this final decision package slide, or any decision packages at all about the department's proposal before we discuss proposed FTE changes? Councilmember Crowver?
Thank you, Chair. On the community action programs, the $379, $440 Energy Assistance, I can't find it, but I recall seeing a release that the recent carbon credit sale, the dollars that were from that were going to be used for that purpose. Would it be realistic to think we could get a substitution from that fund, you know, leaving this fund open for something else?
So the funding that we use for this now, I believe, comes out of the Energy Assistance dollars that we get from partners like Puget Sound Energy and our other energy providers. So we're already using funding from the energy programs to pay for these administrative staff.
Sources, okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, I guess I was just looking more to use those dollars.
And I'm not aware of the carbon credit sale, so I can, we can find out more information there and get back to you on what the implications could be for our county.
I didn't delete it, but it came, I forget where it even came from, but thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hitchen?
Thank you, Chair. I am actually really interested and excited to hear about the supported employment, and so I'll look forward to hearing about that. And just kind of the idea of pulling that, not department, that team out and providing them dedicated, like you're going to be working with our development disabilities, it's a different population with different needs, so I think that will really allow them to focus their energy. And also that skill set of trying to deal with and handle and support families at all different levels, because when you're dealing with your aging and disability, you're tending to only be talking to your seniors and those that are supporting them, but if you've got an autistic toddler or an autistic 70-year-old, like there's huge difference in the kind of care, but there's still developmental disabilities and all kinds of things that can be needed in that space. So this is good. My question was about the opioid settlement funds. One of the things that I had flagged is I know that a portion of the funding in there was described as miscellaneous revenue that was coming in, and I just wanted to clarify, is that the dollars that we're anticipating coming in, so this may be Carrie or Judy, Julie's, is that the dollars we're thinking are coming from the other jurisdictions for the administration?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I just wanted to make sure I was tracking that.
And it could be coming in in two different ways. One is to help pay for the administration under the auditor's office, and the other is when they give us programmatic dollars to put out into the community on their behalf.
But that initial ask, because there was a dollar amount, and we don't know which are going to pool with us, so the dollar there is probably specifically an estimate?
Estimate.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Great to see us getting our house in order, funding with the opioid settlement dollars, the limited duration person to manage planning, distribution, and contracting for the opioid abatement funds. I see this noted as a limited duration person. We know these dollars are going to be flowing for 17 years. Why not ask for a career service person?
So we don't yet know how much we're going to be getting in from the local jurisdictions, so there's that. But the other issue is that we have not gone far enough down the planning path to know if we're going to have lots of little grants or contracts, or many or fewer smaller ones. So it really depends on the workload. This, if we have fewer, so larger contracts over a longer period of time, there's less need for ongoing staff management. Where we find a lot of need for staffing is when we have contracts that are shorter in duration or smaller amounts, basically. And that's a little bit of an unknown on this one. And generally, we like to start off with a limited duration position because we don't know what the workload is going to look like until we get further into it. And that's why you see a lot of these transitions happening too.
I appreciate that. Naturally, I'm concerned about you having the ability to recruit the best people and having someone who's going to apply, who has some certainty about their job security, so you get the best people working for you and for the public. That's where my question comes about. Thank you for the answer. Director Moss, I'm going to ask about a couple of other, I'm going to ask about two other areas in your decision packages. One that is not proposed, I think, but first, let me make sure I understand, when I looked in the budget book, I believe I understand from your FTE count and your organizational chart, you have one person doing communications for the entire Human Services Division. Do I understand your FTE count accurately?
Yes, you do.
And there is a, there was a proposal from the department, completely get there's only so much money and there's got to be priorities, and the council may have slightly different priorities than the executive, and that's how it goes sometimes. But I want to understand, the department made a proposal for a new communications coordinator to support Human Services Outreach and Communication. This would bring your full complement of folks doing communications to a whole two.
Correct.
We've, the council has been asking you and various departments for some, and various divisions of your department, to really increase communication to the public in order to build trust and confidence in what we're doing, the scale of the problem, especially as it relates to housing affordability and homelessness, and to communicate what's going on, how we're investing scarce public resources, what the challenge remains ahead, what outcomes we're having, what more needs to be done. If you had more communication resources, would you be able to at least partially address that request council has made of your division?
There's lots of ways to answer that question. What I will say is that we could use more staff capacity in a lot of different areas. And if you remember going back, one of the points that I made is that we have sort of a finite amount of administrative dollars, and I, along with my leadership team, made some pretty hard choices about what we wanted to fund within our current, our internal capacity, if you will. So we have needs that extend beyond that, but the question was, what do we want to fund within the administrative dollars that we have, I don't know if I'd say more control, but more reliability around? So we chose to put some other things into what we can fund within our own funds. We then made a proposal to fund that communications position with general fund dollars, and that admittedly is a gamble, right? Because the idea is that we could potentially buy more capacity if we rearranged our priorities within the existing funding that we have. Another way I would answer that is that Carrie, who is our awesome communications person, she's the one that created this that you're going to get soon, has a lot of resources that she relies on, not only within the communications team, communications department now for the whole county, but she's developed a network within our department of branding ambassadors, if you will, within each division who are working with her to develop some of those documents and the outreach and the materials that you're talking about. We also have a great partnership, as I've already talked about, with the data team in finance, and they are creating a lot of those materials that are publicly facing, that share a lot of the great outcome data that we've been developing in partnership with them. So I guess I would say it's a yes and answer, that we can always use more capacity and we can, we know very well how to get by with what we have.
Thank you for explaining that. Sir, I'm trying to look through my notes from your decision package to make sure, to see if we have any other questions about... One more follow-up, I'm going to, not for today, but I'm going to ask you to work with Director Robinson to follow up to the council, please. There's a lot of FTEs moving around, and there's a lot of proposals we heard you talk about this morning that are in response to the council's request of you and Finance Department to improve contracting. And you've begun explaining that today. I think there's a good start to understand, and we're going to go through some FTE requested changes as well here in a hot minute. I think we need to hear in one place, one page, what is the strategy for improving contracting? What outcomes are we going to be driving towards in terms of delivery, timeliness, delivery of the various phases of contracting and invoicing? I sense there's been some improvement here, but I got to tell you, from how my phone continues to go off, we're not there yet, at all. And I need to understand, the council needs to understand the strategy and how this budget is going to help us do things differently and better in the next biennium. And so I need to see the written strategy as it relates to the budget and the resources we'll be granting in this regard. So I'll leave it at that.
We will work on that. I'm sorry to hear that you're continuing to hear frustration from our provider community, and I would just continue to ask you to let us know when that happens so that we can follow up with detail about the status of individual contracts and what's going on with them. We, I will say definitively, we have a much better handle on where every contract is and where the bottlenecks are, and that's sometimes within county government, and that's sometimes on the provider side. So I think it's just important to keep in mind that it's a conversation that we have with providers, and it's getting better, but we're not there yet. So I just would appreciate more details so that we can continue on our process improvement efforts.
I know you're really committed to this, Director Moss. I have to say that some of, I haven't been able to diagnose where in the system it is. It is coming regularly, and I have to say that I, from many providers I hear, they are concerned about bringing things to the attention of senior leaders for fear of retribution. And I hear that from many.
That's alarming.
And that's concerning to me. So that's why sometimes senior staff don't hear directly, or through folks like me and others who get these inquiries on the regular for fear of retribution for future contracts. I hear that regularly, and that's very concerning.
That is worrisome. What I can tell you is, you mentioned earlier the importance of adding the deputy position to this, to our department, and we haven't been able to, and I just haven't chosen to for a variety of reasons up until now, but I think that one of the benefits of bringing a deputy in at this point in time will help us do two things. It will help sort of divide up some work so that I can have deputies' help on some of the internal management and housekeeping things that really keep, for better or for worse, the trains running on time, right? So that you, that we have that internal coordination that happens, and that person can be solely dedicated on that. What I would like to be able to spend more time doing is working with our provider community on a one-on-one basis and in small groups, because I worry about that sort of lack of trust that you're implying, because we can't do this work without our providers, they can't do their work without us. So it's sort of a, we are in this together for better or for worse, and I'd rather it be for better. So I really hope that when we have that ability to have a deputy turning more internal, that I can spend more time continuing to develop those relationships externally.
I could not agree more, and why, I'm very eager for you to get your deputy director, and I know many of our providers, most of our providers, trust you a lot, and I think there would be high value for you to be freed up to do that kind of work. Councilmember Crowver?
Thank you, Chair, and that's interesting, because I haven't heard that on your department, but I do for planning from contractors, so it's just perception.
I hear it all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, we all hear different things.
But I don't have a lot of folks in my district that are making application, but I wanted to perhaps, you know, it would be helpful for me if on that, when you drill down, if you're able to identify the obstacles that prevent contracts from being completed in a timely manner, such as if only we didn't have to provide this detail, we could work much faster, or if the provider could, you know, provide this detail quicker, you know, what are the obstacles that are causing delays, if those are identifiable?
Yep, happy to add that.
Yeah, because some of the forums, I understand if they're federal, you can't bypass that, but maybe if we could encourage the feds to say, "Hey, don't ask for these things." So we, you know, we need to get our work done. That kind of thing. Thank you.
Happy to add that.
Thank you. Director Moss, I think we are at your Slide 13, and a lot of this has been talked through through your decision packages, so if you need to go at your pace, but we did hear a lot.
Yeah, I appreciate you queuing it up that way. You're right, I did not intend to go through these line by line because, and maybe this is unique to Human Services, but I would say all of our decision packages, maybe with the exception of one or two, did already deal with FTEs, so we've kind of done that work. What I can tell you is that you see it a little bit differently here, just, it doesn't have the dollar amounts, so it might be a challenge to backtrack, but it shows you the FTEs by position title, so that might track better with some of the details that you have in the spreadsheet in front of you. It also, again, reiterates in the narrative there about whether these are new positions or limited duration, or if they're converting existing positions to career service. Again, I don't think I want to talk, I want to speak to any of these in detail. I will point out if we could go to Slide 14, so the next slide. The second one down you'll note here is the grant accountants, and again, this is a, we're not hiring 1.67 people, right? We're hiring FTEs, and they will absorb this body of work, and this is just an allocation exercise. So the 1.67, and I think on the another slide, the subsequent slide you see a 1.33, again, that's, that relates back to how we allocate on the finance side of our work with our fiscal team. The programmatic staff you'll see are more what you would expect in terms of FTEs, whole FTEs for the most part, and then just a couple here where we're adding FTE capacity, like that move from 37 hours to 40 hours, for example. So unless you want details on any one of those FTE line items, I didn't propose to say anything in more detail about those lines.
Thank you. We're ready to move to Slide 16 and begin discussion about your American Rescue Plan Act activities.
Yeah, so I just have three slides left for you today. Again, we followed your template order, but they're a little bit funky, so I'm going to talk about this ARPA slide, and then there's a DEI slide, and then there's another ARPA slide. So we might rearrange those a little bit, just in my comments, just for flow. But as I mentioned to you at the beginning of my presentation, the decision packages do not include ARPA dollars. Those are sort of dealt with separately within the county budget. Those are sort of dealt with separately within the county budgeting process. However, we do have a substantial amount of ARPA dollars coming to or flowing through Pierce County Human Services. This slide totals approximately $51.6 million that are proposed to be carried over and from previous biennia and spent in the current, or in the 2024, 2025 biennia by Human Services from ARPA dollars. So this provides you a breakdown of how those dollars are allocated and proposed to be spent. There's a little bit of dollars that are set aside for administrative dollars. There's a Community Response Transition Fund. So this is a new thing that I want to tell you about, because the bulk of the other dollars below this are reappropriations. Okay. The Community Response Transition Fund is a new proposal that we've made, using some ARPA dollars that have come back to the county. So you made an initial allocation of funds to purchase the Aspen Court, the, I don't even remember what the name of that hotel was before it was Aspen Court, but we bought that hotel. One of the conditions that we made with the operating organization, Lehigh, was that if they were to receive state dollars to help with that purchase, that some of those county-level dollars would come back to us. They did, so we did. So we got this, this $1.6 million in ARPA funds coming back to the county that we had already, you had already allocated out for homeless support services. It came at a very interesting time, because this came back to us this summer, right around the time that, you all know that we were going through some turmoil, I guess I'll describe it as, when we were making our HHP allocations, so our homeless provider allocations in June, that resulted in us putting out initial award letters based on what we knew at the time, which was substantially less than we had before. We then fixed that, right? We had backfill dollars come from the county, or from the State Department of Commerce. So our homeless system is largely whole, I would say. You might be hearing differently, but that's my characterization of it. But what that experience prompted was a lot of introspection and conversation, not only with our providers, but between you as the council and our executive branch about what do we do when the ARPA dollars run out? So we saw this unexpected return of dollars as an opportunity to address exactly that issue. And if you remember, Councilmember Mello, you wrote a letter to Executive Dan Meyer suggesting that we needed to have a plan, rightly so, that would recognize that we have used a lot of ARPA dollars to pay for ongoing services in our community, and providers have responded by growing their programs. And it's challenging, maybe it gets to some of that trust issue, right, to then cut those down unceremoniously or suddenly. So recognizing, and then, so you wrote that letter. One of the responses you got back from Executive Dan Meyer was, you're right, absolutely, we need to figure out what a transition plan looks like, and we need to recognize that ARPA dollars are going away, and that our post-pandemic reality will look different than what we had in the pandemic. So all that is a setup to say, what we propose to do with these dollars with the Community Response Transition Fund is use these over the next couple of years to fund organizations for a short period of time when we aren't funding them for a long period of time. So that is to say, if we were to fund, let's just say, a shelter, for example, with ARPA dollars, if we come to a point in the next biennium where we don't have ARPA dollars or COVID-related dollars to extend the services of that shelter for a full year, then what we will look to do is use these dollars to help create a, an exit ramp, if you will, to help ease that transition for them to right-size their organization down. So it might be transition dollars for a period of three months as opposed to operational dollars for a full year of operation. So we would like to use them as a way to help smooth the providers' experience moving from an ARPA level of service to a business-as-usual level of service, if you will. So that was a lot of conversation, that was a lot of words about what we're proposing to do with that, so maybe I'll pause. You might have questions.
Yeah, thank you for starting the conversation. We saw that in the ARPA proposal, but was waiting for this conversation to understand what it is. Thank you for being responsive to the inquiries we've made in this regard, and we see the funding cliff, certainly, that you see, so I think that's part of what we're hearing. Can you maybe give us a, you know, not, don't name a agency, of course, but like, can you name, maybe, give us a really specific example of what we might end up resourcing here?
So I think you could look at any of our homeless system, that's where we put a lot of our ARPA dollars. So if you look at the additional outreach that we funded, but I guess the biggest change in 2018 to more recent years is the amount of money that we've put in shelter beds. So some of those shelter beds, we absolutely want to see a continuation of, because we recognize that we still have demand for shelter beds. We might not have revenue to cover all of those shelter beds, so there might be a tiny house village, or a tent camp, or a safe parking site, where we don't have the funding to continue those on. I don't want to name anything more specific, because I, and I don't want to alarm our providers that we're trying to not fund something in the future, just recognizing that we won't have those ARPA dollars. So if we get through a competitive bid process, and some of those end up below the line that get funded, and most of them will be homeless programs, we want to be able to offer them a few months of operational dollars to wind down that program. So if it's shelter beds, a few months to give those staff notice, adequate notice so that they can look for other jobs, or divesting of some capital infrastructure that they've purchased.
Okay. Think we, let's have more conversation offline. I understand the sensitivity of it. I'm really trying to make sure council understands the proposal, because we have six weeks to write this budget, and I'll just tell you that council has, I think, some different, some additional priorities, different priorities than in this ARPA proposal, and so we really want to make sure we understand what is being proposed before we move money around. So I don't know that we can do any more right now, but that's the, we need to understand this proposal to see if it's in alignment with what council wants to resource with these dollars, or if we move the dollars around to a different purpose or a more specific purpose. That is a council priority. That's the reason for the need for the specificity.
Absolutely. And it's a little bit of a chicken-or-egg situation, right? Because we don't have a lot of specificity, because we don't know if it's going to be a thing yet. So we can certainly give you more details about what our intentions are and how we suggest it might work, but that can also be a conversation with the council and staff.
Okay, let's definitely have that, so we understand what you're thinking, as you usually have very good ideas, so we want to, we want to understand them.
Great. The rest of the items, if you're ready, move on. The rest of the items on this list show reappropriations, so that $5.5 million in emergency shelter services, if you recall, was an allocation that you made to the, a direct allocation that you made to the Tacoma Rescue Mission last year, maybe the year prior, for an expansion of their men's shelter on their main campus here in Tacoma on South Tacoma Way. Yeah, South Tacoma Way.
You're right.
Yeah, okay. We've been holding that, because they are still not at the point, they're getting closer, but they're still not at the point of having all of those dollars, and our traditional practice in capital investment is that we don't put our money into a project until it's fully funded, so that we are certain that that project will complete. So we are holding those dollars in reserve for Tacoma Rescue Mission, waiting for them to finish their fundraising for that entire project. I believe the entire project is $18 million, if I'm not mistaken.
Can we get an update about how far along they are in that $18 million fundraising, to see how far away we are, and if we keep holding these dollars? This is a priority. I championed this in the first ARPA proposal, and definitely want to see it through, but we have a deadline to spend these ARPA dollars, as we all know, so I need some certainty that we're going to hit the mark by the end of 2026.
Correct. They have to be allocated by the end of '25, so we've met that goal, but they have to be expended by '26. So you're right to point out that some of these dollars, particularly the, a big one like that, we have to pay special attention to. The other ones down below are a list that should look familiar to you of appropriations that you made, not only in the current biennium, but back in 2021 of ARPA dollars for capital and other services. This is a reappropriation. I'm referencing, you can jump to slide 18, I'm sorry, that gives you detail about the status of most of those, but they are all, mostly all under contract and in progress, and varying stages of completion and expenditure. Maybe one more point that I can share with you, just to go a little deeper on the first two, the $4.4 million and the $9.3 million are compilations of appropriations that you made in 2021, and then again in 2022 and 2023, so each year allocating some of the ARPA dollars to affordable housing projects. We can share with you a list of the, I believe it's eight projects that were funded in part by those revenue sources, for a total of $20 million in ARPA dollars. We've spent, or will, or project to spend by the end of '23, almost $7 million, so that nine plus $4 million represents 13.7 that needs to be carried over as those projects continue in their development, construction development.
Those are awarded projects.
Correct. Those are all awarded, and they are, for the most part, I believe that they, well, I shouldn't say that. Some of them are under active construction right now. Similar with the TRM dollars, I think that it will just be important to stay on top of what the status is of the fundraising and the final financing for some of those projects, where we have dollars committed, but they've not yet started construction. And that's a big part of what Brian and his team are doing.
Thank you. Director Moss, the last one, I think is definitely going to cause some questions. Well, I'm sure we have a lot more questions in this category, but let's jump to the last one, $6.5 million comprehensive plan in homelessness. Is all of this under contract?
So $3.5 million of it is for a shelter to be established in unincorporated Pierce County. It's been awarded, but is not under contract, because we're waiting for a location to be determined. So we are working with the successful applicant to do that. Again, that's one where we're not going to put the contract in place until they have a, they have until, I believe, the end of this calendar year to identify a location, and then we will get under contract with that one. $2 million in prevention, I believe that that prevention RFP is not out right now. We put it out, I don't want to misspeak. $2 million in prevention, and then the final $1 million is for the Shelter Access Hub. I believe that we just closed that NOFA.
Could you follow up with our staff on the detail of that, please?
Yep.
Is the first item under there that you referenced, they haven't found the site yet, but it's under contract, is that Lehigh?
Yes, it is. Yes.
I think we heard three major categories, a shelter in unincorporated Pierce County, yet to find a location, the shelter hub, and then one other item, some prevention.
Correct.
And we'll, we'll get more detail and follow up about that $6.5 million.
Yep.
That $5 million right above the $6.5 million, Director Moss, temporary non-congrat shelter?
That's the, another hotel purchase that we are working on with our partners at Low Income Housing Institute. The proposal, the current proposal is that that's, I don't remember the exact percentages, but it will be some share of shelter, temporary shelter, medical respite, so this is our medical respite program, and then a small portion that will be permanent supportive housing.
Is it under contract?
I don't know what the current status is. Lehigh was zeroing in on a specific location. We're working with the City of Tacoma to make sure that they're on board with it, so I'll have to find out.
Sounds like the location might be in the City of Tacoma? Okay.
Yep.
If you could follow up with the current status, that'd be really helpful.
Will do.
Do we have enough, I'll stop my questions for a second, sir. Councilor Crowe.
Thank you, Chair. If a nonprofit has, has a record being exposed as being researchable or needing to be researched, I'm just a little concerned with an article I had read regarding Lehigh and their business practices, or, and I think those things need to be looked at before we execute. I would assume there is something in the contract that can cause it to go null and void.
Yeah, so there's a lot of press about a lot of things around homeless services, and a lot of community and media sort of concern, and I guess what my initial response to that is that it's hard to know what's reported, what's fact, based on what's reported in the media, so we really wait until we have facts. That said, you're absolutely correct that we do have provisions in our contracts where there is evidence of financial mismanagement, or malfeasance, or some other verified behavior that would cause us to want to cease our relationship, that our contract allows us to do that. So we do have those protections in place. We try to be very cautious in doing that, and make sure that we do it in a fair and legal way. So while we see that there is sometimes allegations or stories in the media, it might not be true, it might not be reflected in the provider, or in the relationships, or the programs, or projects that they're offering, or working on with us, so we work very closely to sort all of that out, I guess is what I'd say. So I'm aware, I share the concerns, and we tread very carefully through that process.
It's when my son says, Mom, you don't drive down Hosmer any time of the day or night, I, kind of a flag goes up, and that's a lot of public property or public assets that are being given to someone that I think we should question, so, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
I think there's a lot of issues happening in the Hosmer area in the south end of Tacoma that is not related to stably housing folks in Aspen Court, that the City of Tacoma, Tacoma Police Department and Human Services are trying to work very hard on. And I don't know that we, I think the, our ability to stably house people and get them out of crisis is not demonstrated to be the reason for crime in that area. That area has had a lot of struggle, and there's a lot of focus and resources being turned to it, to help improve the public safety of it.
I don't begrudge the effort, and to say that the hearts aren't in the right place here, but we need to face the facts on it and deal with that. Thank you, Chair.
Councilor Higgin.
Thank you, Chair. I think one of the things that I keep coming back to is the deadlines by the federal government, especially with any of our capital dollars, and so I just, I think I want to better understand either agencies that you have contracts with, that are building and constructing shelters, buying land to do, fill in the blank, what provisions you have as far as drop dead deadlines, because I would imagine that as a council, we might want to make sure that there are some protections, and we want to make sure that what we're looking at doesn't derail or detract, because you've got a lot of really good programs. I also don't want to send $5.5 million back to the federal government, when I know I have other vendors that might be able to do something different. If we can't make a hotel purchase happen, definitely something we need, but if we can't make it happen, how quickly we can turn around, get those dollars out the door to do something, maybe not as great as medical respite, it's such a need, but something, right? So I just really thinking about how best we can set that up, and that we understand when we pass this budget, what that looks like, and what protections we have in there to make sure that the dollars that have been allocated by the federal government for a variety of different reasons, and we know that housing and homelessness is such a high priority, I don't want to send back any of it.
I share that goal, and we went through extensive conversations with Executive Dan Meyer and his team about that same issue, so we can update the materials that we shared with them and share it with you.
That would be great.
Thank you. Thank you for asking for that, Councilmember Higgin. We definitely need status in that regard. We've put some, we did a lot of work on the Pierce County Village around status and triggers if certain things don't happen by certain dates. We preserve the money for permanent supportive housing and, but we, as you well know, we need, if we're gonna pivot and invest the resources, we need time to pivot and get the RFPs out the door, get the dollars under contract. And we, we can't be trying to pivot in this time next year when we have until 2024, end of 2024, to get things under contract. We need months, not many months, not a, a few weeks to pivot. So we need to have certainty that the things we are reappropriating have real certainty of success. Otherwise, this council is going to look at reappropriating to something else where we think the department and our partners can have more success in getting the dollars out the door and services delivered.
I think my other question just is, is kind of a little bit more detail on safe parking. I don't need it now, but I know it's one of the ways that when we changed the, the land use code around safe parking sites, the hope really was to get it further out into our county, into smaller, smaller parts of our county to serve families and individuals facing homelessness when building a brick and mortar shelter just isn't reasonable. And so I see a very small amount there. It's to continue what we already have, I think. And so just wondering about, I know that we were all magically hoping that, you know, 20 churches might say, hey, we want to do this. But reassessing, is it a dollar thing? Is there more supports needed to get that initial startup? If we wanted to target some locations in the county where we really felt there was a need, what would that look like? Because again, I can't get shelter spaces everywhere, but in the, in the couple of places where we have safe parking, we're finding it very effective, especially in that building relationships and that transition where people are just like in between. And so trying to expand that and I, when I see $150,000 for two years, I don't even know how our current safe parking will stay afloat. So that's something I just really kind of want to dig into because it's such a low cost because there's not the infrastructure per se, but there's still a need, so.
And some of the safe parking efforts that we're, we have right now are, are being covered by the Right Away Grant, so keep that in mind as well.
Okay. So maybe understanding some of those other dollars because we don't, we only see your dollars.
Yes.
Okay. That would be good. Okay.
Thank you. Councilmember Krueger?
Thank you, Chair. This is so huge to try to wrap your head around so many different resources. I, I, I don't particularly want to send it back to the federal government either, but if this, for these dollars are creating more of a burden down the road, that we create something with it that we can't afford to keep, then what? An idea comes to my mind in that one of my constituents is working on the Family Promise Program, and that could be an avenue of something to help out with that. And I was gonna say something else, but now.
It'll come to you in five minutes.
Well, probably as soon as I, I turn off the light, but, but maybe if we had a cheat sheet in the sense of what are all of the different things that can, that can be used for, that we have available within the county that we could brainstorm on to look, look to. So, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Director.
Thank you. Director Moss, the, in the other community response section of the ARPA proposal, I don't think it's on this slide, so maybe it's not your department, there's $1.2 million for food insecurity. Is that gonna be your department or another department?
You have thoughts? Gary can answer that question.
Director Robinson?
Gary Robinson of the Finance Department. The allocations for food insecurity previously were overseen by the Finance Department, so we would propose that those contracts be administered through the Finance Department.
Director Robinson, can you follow up with our staff, please, about what the, what the request for proposals is gonna look like for that?
Certainly.
Thank you. Youth diversion programs in the same section of the ARPA proposal, is that Finance Department or is that Human Services? There's $350,000 reallocated for youth diversion programs.
Juvenile court.
Thank you. We'll ask about that tomorrow. Juvenile court is here. One more question I think I have at this time. Director Moss, have, did you ever have the chance to visit the stability site there in the Dome District of Tacoma that Tacoma stood up when they declared their homelessness emergency?
Yes.
You've had an opportunity to do that?
Been there a couple times.
Great. So have I. I, I've heard many providers are call for something similar, more of that, folks who won't move into traditional shelter, won't move into an apartment by themselves, and you understand the complexity, different services for different folks, you know it better than anybody. I've, I've heard the call from many folks, many providers who do this every day for something similar to that elsewhere, outside of Tacoma. Do you, do you have any, do you have any thoughts on that or are you willing to, to put some thinking about if that kind of model or a twist on that model could work with appropriate resources, if that would be used, is needed in our ecosystem, could be potential partner out there who could be resourced to do that?
Yeah, happy to talk about that with you further. My initial thinking is that we are largely dependent upon our provider community in terms of what they are able to stand up, but we also look a lot at the information and experience of our current shelter system. So we have all types of shelters. We really diversified over the last three years, the type of shelter that we offer, and we can look at cost per bed and vacancy rates to, to determine sort of what, what's most effective and what's most cost effective. I, I guess my initial thinking is that I would, I would want to know what's, what specific components of that particular model make it stand out among others. I mean, it's sort of congregate in the sense that there's a giant tent, but it's also non-congregant in the sense that there are individual pallets. And we do have a lot of pallet shelter models, other pallet shelter models that don't have the big tent on top of them in other parts of the county. City of Fife's program comes to mind, I just visited that recently. So absolutely happy to talk about that and, and see if there's opportunity. The one last thing I would add is Tacoma, for better or for worse, can operate from a, a perspective of scale, and having that kind of pallets within a tent structure requires a certain volume. So I, I don't know that that would be appropriate in far out areas, but there might be other places where that's possible. So, yeah, we can consider that for sure.
Thank you. Thanks for those initial reactions and something like that takes a lot more thinking to, to be thoughtful about. Thank you. Any other questions about the ARPA activities proposed? Director Moss, one last thing before you finish your presentation. It's a small item, but just wanted to note, in the ARPA proposal, there's $50,000 for the Equity Action Collaborative, says program fully expended. I'm told the contract isn't even signed, so I just would like some follow up on the discrepancy there in follow up, please. And, and I certainly want to, Stephanie Love on your shop has been doing tremendous work in this area. I want to make sure there's resources going forward for our full participation in the Equity Action Collaborative. So Director Moss, I'd like to know if we need to add something, and I'm happy to find the resources in the budget to do so, so that we can be a full participating partner in the Equity Action Collaborative. But I want to note that there's a discrepancy in the information in front of us that says it's fully expended, but I'm told the contract isn't even signed.
The Tacoma Pierce County Health Department is a strong partner of ours, so Stephanie and others on our team have been working actively with the Equity Action Collaborative staff, and we will continue to do so. We've been in conversation with them about what the terms of the contract should be relative to that $50,000. We're still ironing out the details of that and, and working with finance closely on what form it should take. It turns out it's not so easy to, for one county agency to buy services from another county agency, believe it or not. So we're working on those details, but we are in regular communication. Cindy and I talk regularly and, and know what our parameters are around that, so I'm not concerned about the services being at risk in the immediate future. And we are working on, like I said, identifying sort of how long those $50,000 can exhaust into the next biennium, and then we will revisit this because we absolutely agree and see the value in continuing our relationship and our involvement in that.
Thank you. Please let us know what resources the partnership will, will need and we'll find them. Thank you for that response, Director Moss. I, I think we're ready for you to talk about your diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives in your budget.
Yeah, and what I will note for you too, just, just to close the loop on ARPA, is that, that, again, that slide 18, which comes after the next, this one, is really just a, a summary of the status, but I, I've heard your request to get more detail on the ARPA status, particularly in line with the executive, the detailed sheet that you have. So we will line up with this sheet and give you a status report and some additional details around timeline expectations and pivot opportunities there where needed. So to close out my presentation, I want to talk a little bit about diversity, equity, and inclusion. However, I will tell you, as you already noted, that you've heard a lot of this from Stephanie, who is the, our community outreach engagement staff person. She presented to you a couple of weeks ago, I believe it was, talking about her work in the annual report that she's required to submit to you. So, so I'm not gonna focus too much on the three bullets below, but I do want to point out to you the idea around applying DEI principles to our budgeting process. Regarding representation and, and participation, just want to remind you about the 13 boards and commissions that we work with on a monthly basis, if not more often, who are actively working with staff to identify priorities and needs in our community. And I'm really proud of the representative, the way that our advisory boards represent the communities that we serve. There's been a lot of thought put into it by not only the council, when you direct what those memberships look like, but also from Executive Dan Meyer, when he is giving us direction about how to recruit and, and select individuals for those boards and commissions. So that really provides the backbone of representation when we're building our agency priorities and making funding decisions. Similar to that, it's not listed here, but in terms of participation and representation, you're all likely aware that many of our federal funders require annual or biennial or five-year plans around the work that we do. So everybody wants to know what we're doing and why we're doing it and what data we use to do it with. So those funding plans are also great opportunities for us to get out, seek input from our communities, whether that's individuals or participants or providers. So recent examples of that is our community needs assessment, which is required for our CDBG dollars, and, I'm sorry, CSBG. That community needs assessment is getting, beginning this fall, and that require, that will result in not only a pretty extensive survey across the community, but also we plan on doing specific focus groups with individual groups as well. Regarding the accountability, we, I just want to read my notes here. We also are focusing our budget on making sure that we are meeting not only community needs, but our provider needs and those of our funders as well. So we're focusing on our accountability at all levels internally and externally in our department. And then finally, equity and impact. We've talked a lot about racial equity in our department and are proud of the, not only the strategic plan that focuses on racial equity, but a standalone racial equity statement that we use to guide the work that we do and develop a culture in our team of recognizing that there are inequities all across our systems and in our operations that we need to work daily to address. So that's just a brief overview of how we identify DEI opportunities to inform our budgeting process. That's all I have for you. That's it. That's all I got.
We did, we did a three and a half hour, close to four hour session on $410 million of public investment in a really significant area, multiple areas in our community. Let me open it up to further discussion about anything that we've heard, including the DEI work that guides the department. Councilmember Krueger?
Thank you, Chair. Could I get a list of those identified inequities at some point?
Yeah, you've asked for that before. I provided some. I'm happy to go back and look at how, give you some more details on how we talk about racial inequities and sort of systemic racism. I think that's what you've talked about in the past.
I'm looking for specific items that are identified that are being addressed.
Yep, sure.
Thank you.
Other questions for Director Moss about what we've heard? Councilmember Higgin?
Thank you, Chair. I get to run and talk about water utilities in nine minutes. So I want to first express my thanks for volunteering or voluntolding, I'm not sure which, to come first, but have a much better handle, will continue. I know we all will have questions. I think the one thing that I'm still feeling like I don't quite understand what's happening is around the unified regional approach around the homeless and how we're really, between the FTEs that are coming on board, all the braided and blended funds, the Marine Howard Act dollars, the, like, all that, and how that's gonna get a regional approach around homelessness. We had that really dynamic meeting with the City of Tacoma, and, and though I think there's some initial kind of beginning steps built into this budget, I don't see it like this staff person is doing the URA, and I think that's part of the proposal that's coming our way, but we have to approve the budget before we get some of that. So what you can share with us and kind of really lay that out, what you're thinking, would be helpful, I think, to get us all on the same page as we start to think about, you know, what are our priorities in here and, and if there's things that we, we don't want to double the work you've already done. If you already have it in there, it's just not clearly identified, that kind of thing. So I'll just leave it at that. But again, my thanks for really doing a nice job of bringing this all before us and helping us try and figure out all the missile, the many, many millions of dollars and funds that come in to support the, the humans in our county.
Thank you for those, for that additional clarifying request, Councilmember Higgin. I'm, I'm bleeding now into our final discussion item, Councilmember, discussion, questions, comments regarding the proposed budget, hopefully focused on human services. So we're now at, at that stage, since we still have the director here to finish out our agenda this morning. Is there any other council member discussion, questions, or comments? Want to note for the record that Councilmember Morell has joined us a little bit of, a little bit ago, listening to the end of this presentation. The presentation certainly is recorded, available for not only members who were not able to make the session this morning, and I know all of them will watch it, but also available for the, for the public, and it'll be made available on the council's budget website dedicated to budget development for future reference. I'll just close by reflecting on some of the, we, all of us have asked questions along the way, and I know our staff is taking notes and will follow up with Director Moss and her senior team. I just wanted, not to, there, there's a lot more than what I'm gonna summarize, and we do expect follow up on all of it, but I just wanted, some major things that are on my mind. I really appreciate some of the new thinking from Director Moss and how to organize the department, this eighth division on development of disabilities makes a lot of sense. Really looking forward to seeing the, the contracting strategy that I know that we've asked for of Director Moss and Director Robinson, and how the FTE counts that are moving around is gonna get to better service delivery in that regard. That is a big deal for us. We really want to understand how the FTE requests are gonna relate to outcomes, what's gonna be different going forward, especially with the human resources we will be investing in. We've asked for the homelessness, homelessness strategy as it relates to budget, what specifically are we funding? We've asked for that. Asked for some thinking on a stability site type operation in unincorporated Pierce County. I'm gonna follow up on more. I'm going to follow up on more communications capacity. I appreciated the director's response. I think there needs to be more here because we ask a lot of this department, and so much of it is forward-facing, and we have a lot of work to do to tell the community what we are working on, to raise the confidence and trust in the community about the hundreds of millions of dollars we're investing. And that takes communications investment in order to do that, to build public trust and confidence. So I want to spend more time thinking about in a further investment there. And finally, I'm really, I continue to be concerned, as I noted in our discussion today, about the ARPA spending and whether we have the right things in the list to hit our deadlines for spending that we have. So we're going to be scrubbing that really hard with the help of the department to get a lot more confidence that what's in front of us, it can be achieved, or I know that the council will work with the department to make sure we can invest in places where we can deliver in the time that the federal government has given us. I just want, so that's the summary, I think, of my comments. I don't see any other hands. Director Moss, thank you for going first. Thank you for just tremendous work that you are leading. As demonstrated in the three hours or so you've been with us, you have complicated, multifaceted work that you are leading. I am so happy you're getting a deputy director soon, knock on wood. But we are so grateful for your compassion, your smarts, your strategy, hardworking team that you've assembled to do all this different kind of work, day in and day out. It is hard work. We ask tough questions because we care, and we know you care, but this is really important work, and people need these services to be delivered. And so that's where the oomph comes from, and we care deeply. We know you do too. Thank you so much for your leadership, and thank you for being with us, and we'll have a lot more follow-up to come.
Thank you.
Seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council and, before I do adjourn, I just want to remind members, tomorrow we have a full day of committee of the holes. In the morning, we have the Sheriff Department. We'll take a lunch break, and we'll come back in the afternoon, and we'll do Superior Court, and then we'll do our juvenile court. And so members are now even more oriented to all the budget documents, and we'll be prepared for those discussions tomorrow. Seeing no further business before the Pierce County Council and Committee of the Whole, we are adjourned.